We'll start with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll start with the agenda. Is there any ratifications to the agenda? Can you hear me now? I have the Dunn County Fair Association. And behind when Al Heiser comes up to talk about some snow removal. With that, may I, can I get a motion to approve the agenda, please? Do I get a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Go to the minutes. The minutes of April or February 1st, 2022. Are there any corrections to the minutes?
Move to approve as printed and presented.
Mr. Zander moved to approve. May I get a second?
I'll second.
Approved and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Onto accounts payable. Are there any questions on the bills?
I do have one bill to add, and that's for gravel crushing. And it's for $218,050.86, and it'll be paid out of County Road.
Any question on, it's under E-911 Fund and under Elections, Courtyard, SV, what is that? It's a visa charge.
That, that's for our election training in Bismarck. Is it under Courtyard?
Yes.
Yep, we stayed at the courtyard.
Then there's under Consolidated, if the Sheriff's Department is at $3,598 on consolidated phone installation, where is that for?
That was the courthouse transfer, getting the guys settled downstairs in the basement.
Oh, okay, thank you.
And then that, also our squad room, taking over the old dispatch area.
Which pit is the 218-4L?
That's where the dent is spit out by the Speedway.
Thank you.
Are there any more questions on the bills?
I'll move to approve the bills as presented.
I'll take that with the additions that were added to it.
We'll do a roll call vote. Commissioner Messer?
Aye.
Commissioner Francheck?
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
Commissioner Zander?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carried. Now we move on to the National County Government Monthly Proclamation. National County Government Month, April 2022. Counties thrive. Whereas the nation's 3,069 counties, serving more than 315 million Americans, provide essential services to create healthy, safe, and vibrant communities. And whereas counties provide public health services, administer justice, keep communities safe, foster economic opportunities, and much more. And whereas Stark County and all counties take pride in our responsibility to protect and enhance the well, the health, the well-being, and the safety of our residents in, in efficient and cost-effective ways. And whereas each year since 1991, the National Association of Counties has encouraged counties across the country to elevate awareness of county responsibilities, programs, and services. And whereas Stark County will celebrate its employees and elected officials, share information with local government classes regarding careers in government, and provide activity books for elementary-age kids throughout this month. Now, therefore, it be resolved that the Stark County Commission does hereby proclaim April 2022 as National County Government Month, and encourage all county officials, employees, schools, and residents to participate in county government and self, with the celebration of activities. And with that, the 2021 Retirement Recognition, Joetta Piercy?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Joetta Piercy, Human Resources Director. As part of the celebration, we would like to recognize two individuals that retired this past year. And to help me, I'd like Al Heiser to come up. They were both Road Department employees. Would you like to say a few years?
Sure. Tom Stevens is here. If you want to come up, and Jim Height, I don't, if Jim is here or not. Any of you that know Jim, Jim's kind of a shire-type of guy, so, but, you know, I'd like to recognize these guys. Tom with 36 years of service with Stark County. You can always rely on Tom. If it's Saturdays, Sundays, weekends, snow ice control, he was only a phone call away. Jim Height was a seasonal employee. With Jim, I think Jim knows every nick and cranny in Stark County. You tell Jim to go down to this corner where them black cows are, he'd be over there. He knew exactly where they were at, so, you know. And it's not only just the guys that retired. Our Road Department, I think we got one of the best departments in the state. And I'd back that up with anybody. We got dedicated employees, and they're always willing to help. So I'm really proud to have that crew working under my, under my staff, so. But with that, Tom, I appreciate your years of service.
Thank you.
Enjoy your retirement and your grandkids. That's what it's about.
But I do want to say that I appreciate this man here. I learned a lot from him and everything like this. And I know that if I called up and I wanted to talk to him, I could depend on him and everything. And I thank all of you for the good times that I had with the county and everything, so.
Mr. Stevens, or Tom, could we get a picture with you and L with the certificate, just right here, L, please?
Sure.
Maybe away from the corner, just a tab?
Be now telling us what to do.
Yeah, that's right.
Got it. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have the Dakota Room Pictures, Kurt Freilich.
Thank you.
Kurt Freilich, NDSU Extension, Stark Billings County Extension Agent. We, with the new building over there in the Dakota Room, very big room, it was just kind of some bland walls. So we went through, we contracted through studios down on, on Vallard. We found a bunch of pictures, historic pictures, from the Stark County Historical Museum. We were able to get those pictures enlarged. And what you're seeing, I think up on the PowerPoint, is some of the pictures. That's an old, that's a Stark County courthouse, I believe in 1966. There is, and this is the handout that I gave to you folks up front, Farm and Ranch sod building that we found. We're not sure, according to the Historical Society, it didn't give us, it gave us some dates on some of the pictures, but not all of the pictures. So that's kind of a cool picture that's in the Dakota Room. Whoever's running the PowerPoint, if you can go to the next slide. We tried to group pictures. Here's some pictures from some of the early days of harvesting. There's three combines, there's an individual out working a field, and then there's a forage harvester that we found out of Richardson. There's also one of an old steam engine that we were able to put in into the room. It looks, it looks really neat where they located it. Go ahead, who's on the PowerPoint? There was one great big wall, and we tried to figure out what the heck could we put on that wall? And in that wall, we decided to go with some trains, some train engines. There's a middle train in there, and those of you that, if you can see it tonight, in the audience, that middle train looks like the newest train, and more probably from, and when I've done a little kind of a quiz of people that have come, everybody says it's probably a 1950s decade. That's actually the 1930s. The train right to the next to it, to it on the left-hand side of that is a train from 1890s to 1900, according to what the museum was able to give us. So it really fits real well in that particular, on that particular wall. Go ahead. And then on the outside of the wall, outside of the room, in the corridor, walking into the hallway, we found some pictures of the old Bennett Coal Mine. And it doesn't show up, I think it's the, on the picture up on the PowerPoint. It doesn't really show up very clear here, but there's a lower left-hand picture with some gentlemen standing there. There's actually a horse in that picture. Must be pulling, pulling out a little bit of a rail car, so. So really kind of neat, and it gives you some ideas of what some of our ancestors did to make this area prosperous and what it is today. Go ahead and go on to your next, there you go. And then there's a group of pictures on the other side of that wall. There's a bronze plaque in there of when that building was built. The very top picture is, I gotta look at my notes here. Very top picture is Dickinson, 1883 Vallard Street. In the lower part of that picture on the right-hand side, that's all Buffalo Heights. So it's, it's really cool. We've got, there's a Daglum Store picture in there. Taylor Main Street, St. Elizabeth Catholic Church down at Leffler, and then the corner of Sims and Vallard in Dickinson. And that was in the mid 50s is when that picture was taken, so. I know Commissioner Messer, he had to come to a private applicator training, so he was able to see these pictures. But I welcome anybody, come on over, take a look at them. Oh, there's one more picture. I forgot about it. Go ahead, I believe, or did you, or was it the very first one? Maybe it was the very first one. You guys might have rolled by it, right there. This is a picture of, and it's in the vestibule, so when you walk in the door, see, there's another door, you get into the hallway. Versipi 4H Baby Beef Cabs, 1930. So maybe there's some folks in the audience that have longer history than I do of where Versipi might be. You look at that, and when you study the picture and you get up close to it, it looks like a group of possibly Navy individuals in that picture. They're sitting in the stands, but that's actually a picture, there must be some kind of a band, because we can pull out instruments, see some instruments in there. And, you know, as I look at that particular picture today, and they've got it labeled baby beef, and I look at those animals that are up there, I know those are not, not calves, because their tails are too long. Those got to be yearlings of some sort, so somebody, whoever labeled it, just had it, had the wrong label on it. But it's really a neat, cool picture, and I think it really helps set off that, that facility over there, so. Mr. Zander?
Which one is Bernie?
I, I think he was the guy over in the way, part of the corner, kind of hiding by the, by the grandstand.
I think Versipi was northwest of Manny. I think that's where my mom went to school. Grade school.
I don't know. Versipi.
Was it there? Good to know.
There was a lady last night at a meeting that we had there, and she said that one time there was a school and a church there. But this, you know, fairly cool picture to, to help set off that bill. So we thank the Stark County Historical Museum for the rights to these pictures, and then to get them blowed up. And we were very concerned about, were they going to get pixelated? And were they, how clear were they going to be? But they look really nice, really nice, so come on over and, and enjoy. Thank you.
Thanks, Kurt. Next on the agenda is the Sheriff's Report.
Chairman, Commissioners, good morning.
Good morning.
Highlights for the month of March for the Stark County Sheriff's Department. We had 1,334 calls for service in March. This is down from 1,477 last year. 205 traffic stops, this is down from 218 last year. Forty-eight of those stops from the city of Dickinson, 157 of those stops from the county and neighboring small towns. Had 217 public relations stops, that is down from 218 last year. 21 bar checks, that's up from five last year. Had five theft-related calls for service, that's down from 12 last year. It's good to see that. Had 49 transports, 16 prisoner, two assists, 15 court, two juvenile, three medical, and 11 mental health. Had 19 canine usages, six truck rig stops, and she participated in 37 other calls for service. Had 31 agency assists, that's up from 22 last month, still in a good range. Had 31 agency assists, that's up from 22 last month, still in a good range. Responded to 12 accidents, zero of those were pedestrian, zero were fatality, two hit-and-run, one injury, and nine property. At 96 total arrests for the month. Just want to remind everybody that we have the Easter egg hunts coming up this month, there's a lot of chatter about that. And I really have to give a shout out to the communities for how much they're supporting these events. It's quite amazing, very proud of our, our county. We had two incidents in the last month, and I want to give some praise to the, those that cooperated with us to bring those to completion. And about two weeks ago, that was an incident south, just a little bit southwest of Bellfield. And that was the Highway Patrol, including their plane, Dunn County and Billings County that helped us bring that to completion, as well as some citizens that helped us out. And then last night, did anybody get a reverse 911 call last night? Sorry about that. Not gonna blame us, but I'm not gonna blame anybody else publicly either. But what happened was, pretty much everyone except in that area we were trying to get the 911 call to, got notified of the incident. So backwards is what happened, so. But again, yesterday, I want to give a shout out to Slope County and Hedinger County, as well as the North Dakota Highway Patrol for helping us bring that to resolution. Suspect was captured about 12:30 a.m. After, I think we were out looking for him since 3, 3 o'clock that afternoon. And I really want to commend some members of our staff. We worked 12-hour shifts from 6 to 6, both nights and days. And we had a couple gentlemen that were out till 10 o'clock last night. I had to force them to go home. That's four hours, four hours after their shift, knowing that they had to come back in at 6 o'clock this morning, so. Kudos to them. They're like a couple bloodhounds out there last night, clearing buildings and, and trodden through the, the fields, so. Appreciate them. Any questions? Thank you. Yes, Ken?
Yeah. Just curious about the 19 canine usages, what?
Yes.
Kind of break that down, what, what kind of activities those are?
Um, I didn't clarify on here, but I can get that for you. Most of them are probably gonna be sniffs, as we call them, can, or narcotic sniffs. Last night, for instance, we had a track with our canine, trying to locate that suspect. A lot of it, or probably half of it, maybe would be public relation stuff for this month anyway. You'll see, usually see an increase in the summertime of actual narcotic sniffs. But we have some fundraising stuff going on, and then, of course, anytime school's in session, we're gonna have some public relation stuff with the canines.
Well, the reason I bring that up is I chatter. Yeah, and event, our public, public relations event, or whatever you refer to those as, that one of the canine units got overly aggressive.
Okay, I guess I was not made aware.
You weren't the one that was bitten by the dog?
Oh, when we were doing a, when we were doing a, a demo for the ambulance shop, I was bit in the butt, yes. But that was my fault for overstimulating the dog, so. Well, everybody seemed to love it, so.
Do you have the video?
Yes, we do, actually.
Well, what, what concerns me about that is a canine unit becoming aggressive or with the, with either the handler and/or the sheriff and/or the...
Well, I was wearing the bite suit at the time, so I was taking a bite. And in that particular scenario, we, we show people how they prone the suspect out on the ground. And like I said, in that particular instance, I was hitting the dog with an agitation stick, which brings the dog to, it's probably its highest level that it's going to have when a, when a suspect is punching it or striking it. And when the handler took him off of my arm, he, and they're still learning, you, you pull him straight away, well, he didn't, and the dog bit me in the butt. Which, like I said, it was great.
Thank you, appreciate that. One other item. There was, again, some chatter. An incident involving a deputy and some alcohol at a, a training exercise?
Yeah, I guess we don't, and you can defer to either HR or the state's attorneys on, state's attorney on this issue. I guess we don't discuss personnel issues in a open forum, but that was dealt with quite harshly and appropriately, I believe.
Okay, I'd like to follow up on that, either with yourself and/or HR.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, thank you.
Sheriff's Department camera update, Jesse Hoff.
All right, last time I was up here, I was asking for the monies for the camera project, and I figured it'd be fair to give everybody an update. Cameras started being installed in March 1st. We did get body cameras, cameras in the vehicles, and cameras in our interview rooms. Everything's in, we're 80% complete on the installation. The last piece we're waiting on is a, it's a computer program that tells our CAD, which is Computer Aided Dispatch. The CAD will tell the cameras when we've been dispatched to a call and when we've arrived, and turns our cameras on for us. So that is the piece that is missing. Right now, we're using the cameras, we're just manually starting and stopping the recording, which, with these cameras, it's in here, the lens is right here, the camera will tell me what it's doing.
Not recording, mounted, Wi-Fi connected.
Some of the, in the interest of time, I'll save a lot of the features and stuff I owe Jason, a bit of a piece in the Dickinson press on it yet, so. I'll elaborate a bit more with him. One of the cool things about the camera itself is if I take it, I'm gonna take it out of the vest, so I don't lay down with it in front of the commission, because I might fall asleep, I was awake all night with everybody else. But if I lay the camera down, in its cradle, it's gonna give me about 15 seconds, and then it's gonna think something's wrong. I'm injured.
Sending body worn down in 30 seconds.
So it's gonna send body worn down, which is gonna make the sheriff's body camera start screaming. Everybody working, everybody wearing the body war, the camera is gonna know I'm in trouble, that I'm laying on the ground. It's gonna give them coordinates of where I'm at. I'm not gonna do it here, because I don't want everybody's camera to start screaming, and it's a real, I need a computer to make it stop. So we're gonna leave that, just kind of as a showpiece. But that's where we're at, about 80% done. The only thing we're missing is that CAD integration, so the cameras start automatically on a call. They are wired to the lights in the vehicles. If we turn our lights on, the cameras come on. If we open the door, the body camera comes on. It's, it's leaps and bounds better than where we had it. Just reviewing this morning, some of the footage we captured last night during the incident the sheriff was talking about is, is actually pretty amazing.
Oh, are they at night?
It's a camera, and it is, you know, when I took it out, it is essentially a cellphone that they removed a lot of the Android components from and put their own stuff on. Inside here, it's actually got four lenses, so it is a pretty good quality camera. We've got them set to record at 720p, which isn't quite as high as it'll go, but not as low as it'll go either. It's susceptible to, just like any other camera, it can't see in the dark. But if the lighting is there, the quality, the quality's there too. I would say I'm, I've gotten everything I've expected out of them, for sure. Except I can't get it back in my vest, because I just, gotta look at what you're doing while you do that. There, any other questions on the cameras? All right, am I on for, yep, that's my document right there. So the next bit I was gonna talk about is a request for radios. There is in this document, towards the bottom, where I stated the problem, I said, on May 8th, 2022, I attended a meeting. It was actually March 8th, I cannot travel into the future, I, I do make typos. It was March 8th, I went to this meeting, Darren Anderson, the new project lead, and we figured out, between me and him and Mike Hannell, that what the sheriff's office had assumed this project was gonna be is not what it is. Some of the radios, we thought for a long time that would work with the project, will not. Kind of the hang-up there, and it goes back to the previous sheriff and the administration then. We were told that 6,500 series radios and 8,500 series radios, just like 8,000 and 6,000 series radios, would work with the program, which is partially correct, as long as those 6,000s or 6,500s are new and broadcasting and receiving in 800 megahertz. I'm not a radio guy, I don't know 800 megahertz, 800 megahertz was never mentioned at that point. But now we come to find out that we had 26 6,500 series radios, and we thought we were good, because that was on the quote. That's what we were told would work. Our 6,500 series radios are old, they broadcast and transmit on the VHF frequency, not 8,000 megahertz. They're old enough that they cannot be converted. They will be VHF radios until the point they're, they're disposed of. So to go forward with the project, the project is statewide, we are gonna need more radios capable of 800 megahertz to the tune of 26 mobile radios and eight portable radios. Portable, when I say mobile, mobile and portable, mobile is in a vehicle, portable is what is on our hips. This is a, this is a portable radio, mobile radios are in vehicles. I did do a breakdown in the history of the grants we have received, the radios we have purchased out of budget. Some of the grants, or not the grants, but the reimbursements from the state. The state is set up for every radio purchased by law enforcement, they'll reimburse $1,500. We've taken advantage of some of that, put that money back in the county. The problem is, as it stands right now, learning a month ago that we need all these radios is for law enforcement, that state reimbursement expires January 2023. And after that, unless the legislature were to extend that timeframe, we're not gonna be able to get our $1,500 back per radio from the state. Bit of a complex issue here with, I mean, I mean, to get the $1,500 back, we'd have to move quick. I, I don't know, I, I wrote down all my thoughts, I went, well, we're gonna go to the commission and see what our options are and, and talk about this, because the 26 mobile radios and eight portable radios, the quote we receive back using the state bid, less the cost of antennas, is gonna be $223,898. And if we were to pursue that before January 2023, or later, if the legislature did extend it, we would be getting 51,000 of those dollars back in the form of reimbursement.
Jesse, did you talk to anybody in the, at the state level if they were gonna be able to extend that, or do a sunset clause onto that bill?
We, I never did talk to any members of the legislature. This is just me speaking with the project lead, Darren Anderson, he said, right now it's set, they planned to extend it, but right now it hasn't been extended.
Okay.
Your deadline to come in compliance is the end of, where did I see that? 22?
If we wanted the $1,500 back, the, there's no strict deadline anytime soon to get these radios replaced. Realistically speaking, our radios would work. My understanding, the last radios being switched over is gonna be state radio in the state, and that might be as late as the end of 2024, if not 2025. They are hoping to, I think, start testing within two or three weeks here, is that right, Shawna? Here in the Dickinson area, there's a tower south of town that they've got with these new 800 megahertz. So we're gonna start testing between dispatch, DPD, and hopefully us, with the radios we do have that'll function on the system. So testing is gonna start anytime now. Our deadline to get radios purchased and everything working, right now is tentatively that 2024 area, with sooner being preferential, because then we've got it set up and we're ready to go. Once that deadline hits, we don't have anything left hanging open.
So the state dictates that you spend, whatever it is, 5,800 a radio, and then they reimburse us for 1,500. I guess, seems ironic to me, but, you know, I know, I realize you need them, and we gotta figure out a way to get them to you, so.
So Jesse, you said your quote, current quote is only good until June 16th, and then you're thinking it's gonna jump?
Yes, prices have been increasing. Kind of the problem here is a shortage. Talking to the project manager for Siren, a couple problems. Motorola has such a demand for radios, between their big radio projects, what's going on overseas right now, combined with the shortage of materials, specifically plastics, they're not able to get enough plastics to make a lot of this stuff. They have about $15 billion in back orders, the company Motorola does, which is about twice of their annual revenue. So radios is talking to Kohler, Dennis Kohler down at Kohler Communications. He ordered some radios for Dunn County back in November, right now they're not projected to get them till August, and that might actually get pushed back even further. So ordering the radios means you're probably going to get them in about a year at this point. That wait time is, is gonna increase supposedly.
So ordering them now would tie that price in?
Yes, signing a quote, ordering them now would tie them to the quote. Through the last two, three years, as the state quote goes, it has increased from time to time, as they go, well, we, we actually want this feature on all their radios, and want this feature, and want this feature. The price goes up with the features that the state is adding, and I'd agree with Commissioner Messer, it's messed up to think that the state voted for a project, and we get stuck with the cost, and they only give us, you know, a quarter of that cost back. At the end of the day, it's gonna be for the better, you know, this portable on my hip, operating on VHF, it, it's a finicky thing, I could stand in that corner of the room and probably talk to dispatches fine, and if I moved to that corner of the room, I, I won't get anybody.
A couple questions, thank you. So the radios that you're proposing, would, we would pay for those when they are delivered, maybe a year from now?
The radios we'd ordered in the past were invoiced on delivery, yes.
Okay, so the, the radios we currently have, are they compatible with this new radio system, or not?
Yes, this includes, when I say eight portable radios, 26 mobile radios. We have, I didn't put the number on here, so it's a good question, I wanna say we have 31 portable radios total. So 31 minus eight means 25 of our portable radios, including this one, are compliant with the new program. We, we did a good job ordering those 8,000 series portables on the breakdown. Where we failed to order radios is in the vehicles, because we had 6,500 series in the vehicles, we thought they were good, and we just learned that they're not.
So the current radio inventory that you're referring to, that, those radios essentially will be taken out of service?
Yes, I have not talked to anybody with surplus, or Kohler Communications, ECI, and Bismarck. I'm sure we could find somebody to buy them, I mean, VHF is still a frequency that'd be used by oil field, construction. Somebody might buy our old radios.
That was kind of the point I was trying to make, so even though they're being replaced, they still have a value?
Yes.
All right. Are you looking for a motion to approve the expense on the new radios? Is that why you're here?
Potentially, yes.
Commissioner Zander, I, if we could, I think that the, I had done a little research and talking, and that stipend might go up from $1,500.
Yeah, but regardless of what the payback is, you're looking for support to purchase the new radios?
Yes, the budget, as we have it written for 2022, doesn't give us that $223,000 of space to do this out of budget.
Well, to move things along, I, I'm assuming then, a year from now, when the radios arrive, that our next budgeting process for the year 2023 is soon to begin. And so, uh, that information needs to get to, um, the auditor's office so that you can, uh, prepare a budget to include those, that expense, is that correct?
I, I guess the only downside would be if the radios did show up earlier and not in the twenty-twenty-three budget. Then are we, do you just want to address it then?
Yeah, but I think what we're hearing is that's never going to happen. So anyhow, I'm going to offer a motion to approve the replacement of the radios as, uh, presented by Mr. Hoff and, um, that the, uh, twenty-twenty-three budget reflect that cost.
Um, there's a motion on the table. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
So when you get rid of the old radios then, or present radios, not old, whatever, that money goes back to our general fund or where does that, how does that money come back?
General fund, yeah.
The, the entire sheriff's department, um, budget is part of the general fund. But, so yeah, it would come back.
So what Motorola has, you know, because they approved some of the radios you purchased already and then they went back and said, wait, those aren't going to be compatible. So are we going to be able to guarantee these radios we're ordering?
The ten we ordered in December of twenty-eighteen, um, two vehicle radios we ordered in June twenty-nineteen and potentially five portable radios that were ordered in November twenty-nineteen. What happened is as time progressed, the state added more requirements or more things they wanted to the radios.
Okay.
So those things have to be added to the radios we purchased before they were added. Some of it is as minor as software, paying somebody to update the software on it. Some of them do need, uh, specific programming or modules, like for over-the-air programming, things that the state decided they needed on, on these radios.
Just a qual, follow-up question then. So the purchases that were made that you have, uh, laid out on that first page, I haven't totaled them up, but uh, you have some in eighteen, a couple in nineteen, then a lot of them in twenty-twenty. Um, where, where did those funds come from? Did we have some COVID money there that went into these or was it part of the budget?
Those are all grants combined with the budget.
Okay.
And then as reimbursements came in, those reimbursements from the state, fifteen hundred dollars per radio went back into the general fund.
So will there be more grants again to keep applying for, for these as it progresses?
This, uh, I guess I learned about it less than a month ago, so at this point we haven't applied for any other grants towards it.
Okay.
Uh, usually Lieutenant Mayor has zero to the ground on grants. I don't think we've heard of any with a significant dollar amount to put a dent in two hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. I'm sure we could get some smaller, uh, look into getting some smaller ones. But at, at this point, we haven't looked towards any grants towards this.
My question too is if the grants were going to be available?
I think this next, next legislation, legislation session, maybe they might be able to tweak some of this bill or get some grants. So that would help too. Mr. Mayor?
I just want to offer some clarification on the grant to make sure we're on the same page. The grants are good. I mean, it's, it's extra money, but probably two more, two points that need to be made. When it comes to the state reimbursement, if we have grant dollars that cover the cost, a certain percentage or all of it, okay? Then the state reimbursement is either prorated or it's totally absolved. So are you going to pay it for it with the reimbursement partially or with grant funds? So I, I, that's, that's, I mean, grants are good, but there again, it, it will affect that fifteen hundred dollars or if it goes up later, a year from now, two years from now, it'll affect, because I, I know the last batch that we bought, I was only able to apply like nine hundred and eighty dollars to each one of those radios because we had to prorate it out because we had paid for it with an Agribank grant. That was right around thirty thousand dollars.
So you're saying unless of the grant is more than fifteen hundred dollars a radio, it's not even really worth applying?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, and I think we run into an issue. Um, if the county comes in and approves the funds, now the funding has been approved, right? We come back and do grants, that's supplanting and that's illegal. So you can't come in after the fact, if we have the money, we're going to do it. We made the, essentially started the purchasing process, using grants, then that would be supplanting.
Will they pay the last fifteen hundred, not the first fifteen hundred?
Correct.
So if they, if they change, if we approve this today and then legislation goes, you know what, fifteen hundred was quite small, we're going to do twenty-five hundred, will we still qualify for that?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Thanks. And is there any more discussion? With that, I'll do a roll call vote. Commissioner Zander?
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
Commissioner, Commissioner Messer?
Aye.
Commissioner Franchek?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our auditor is, um, I'm sorry, I missed a part. On the clerk of court, our auditor is going to speak on that.
So we have a service agreement. The clerk of court has asked our sheriff's department if they would, escort their money to the bank twice a week as the state requires that security does the escorting. And I talked to Corey and he said the sheriff's department can do that. And after speaking with the clerk of court, we agreed to four hundred dollars a month if the commission is okay with that. It would probably take a couple minutes and any of Corey's staff deputies could take and escort that money to the bank. And they would like this agreement to go into effect as of May first.
You said four hundred because it says two hundred on the contract we got?
I know, I know. We didn't have time to change it to four hundred. So, but four hundred is what they are willing to pay.
And how is this done now?
Currently it's contracted out through a private security firm and they spoke with other counties to see how they were doing it because the cost keeps going up. And then they came to me and asked if our sheriff's department would be interested in doing it for him. And it did get approval from the state if they wanted to do that.
Who pays for it now?
Who, who pays for it?
There must be a fee that they're paying.
The state.
Does that come out of our, our budget then too?
No, no, the four hundred dollars would go into our budget, the sheriff's.
Oh, okay.
So, uh, you said May first?
Yeah, on here it would be approved in April, but they still are in contract with the other one until May first.
I would move to, uh, have, uh, chairman Arthod sign the, uh, service agreement with district court as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded.
Can I clarify something? It's, as it's presented, it says two hundred. So if you want it to be four hundred, just make sure that you note that in your motion.
I'm sorry?
Right now the agreement says two hundred dollars. So if you want it, um, to read four hundred, note that in your motion because as presented it'd be two hundred.
Okay. Uh, to include in my motion, the, uh, the, uh, reimbursement fee will be, will be four hundred dollars.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Commissioner Zander?
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
Commissioner Franchek?
Aye.
Commissioner Messer?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carried. County Road, Alheiser.
Well, good morning, everyone. Just kind of a rundown with the road crews up to. We finally got a little bit of moisture, so we're blading roads, which I'm not quite sure is the right thing to do now. Hopefully we'll get some more moisture, but as the grass starts creeping in the shoulder of the roads, it really creates grief for us later on. So we're working on that. Uh, we've filled just about all the frac tanks that we got scattered throughout the county for the rail fires to, uh, to use if they need them and they're kind of aware of that. Um, some projects that we're working on, um, we're, Jeremy's working on a little project for us, one hundred and sixteenth Avenue from the railroad tracks past Marathon up to the intersection of thirty-ninth. Uh, we're thinking about putting some pavement on that stretch of road there. That thing is almost impossible for us to maintain anymore. Uh, so we're going to get a set of plans done for that. Um, one thing nice about it, this summer we have, we'll have two plants around Dickinson, so we should be able to get a pretty good, uh, price on it. Mayo's going to be sitting up north of the Fisher Pit, doing a big project in Richardson and of course Northern's got their plan at South Art. Um, there's a subdivision out at South Art called Rivers Edge. There's about thirteen homes in there. And, uh, if I go off of, uh, Northern's annual quote for paving, it'll run about a hundred and eighteen thousand to that project. And then, uh, we're still working on the cost of the one on, uh, one hundred and sixteenth Avenue, but and I would like to, uh, bid some of these together. Another project along Highway ten, just east of a hundred and fifth Avenue, just kind of a frontage road that runs along there. Number of years ago when we paved Highway ten, we put a bunch of recycle on there. It needs upgrades, so I'd like to, uh, put a little asphalt on that to kind of maintain that. Um, and then, uh, there's, uh, Copper Leaf Subdivision, which is right above the Green River um, hill. We had an estimate is roughly about two hundred and seventy thousand to pave that. It's not really filled in yet, you know, with a lot of homes, like some of the other subdivisions we've paved, you know, they're more densely populated, so the population, I mean, the people up there were willing to pitch in about fifty-four thousand to help pay for that. So it'll be about two hundred and sixteen thousand. I'd like to tie some of these paving projects together, you know, so we can get a better price. And, uh, you know, years ago we went in and paved a lot of our other subdivisions in town, especially the ones that are right off the paved roads. And like our subdivision policy says, if the roads are, if you're going to build a new one, if the roads are paved off of it, up to it, then you'll have to pave your, uh, subdivision. So we've been just kind of working on some. We started a number of years ago with the Gillic subdivision. We moved east to Pribbles. Now we're on the, on the eastern edge. So let's run that by you, see if anybody's got any questions or thoughts or anything. And we do have the, we do have the funds for it. That House bill fifteen oh five, we received, uh, two and a half million dollars and so we're going to, we use some of them funds for that. And then the, some of the other funds we're going to use on a hundred and seventh Avenue and thirty-second to regrade that for future pavement someday, you know, whenever. But we'll want to get that road graded up, so if the funding comes available, we just have to do a paving job and no more grading. So anybody got any questions, ideas, suggestions?
Mr. Heiser, with all of these pavings that we're doing, um, I know we, we do the pavings, but then there's, you know, they pay their taxes and there's not any snow removal involved after that it's paid. And I talked to you a little bit and you said, really, there's not a policy in the past. It was just discussed that it wasn't going to get, there were, they didn't have the services for snow removal.
After I come to work, you're nuts over eighteen years ago, when it's, a lot of new subdivision that were added since then, were almost like a private subdivision, but were, which the county never maintained them. You know, actually some of the gravel ones, we just went in in-kind work and, and re-gravel some of them to kind of, to help them out. But, um, if, if the commission suit, you know, does decide to do that, that's, all I need is the word. And I never had the word before to do it. So I mean, it's, the, the snow removal isn't a lot. Some of the major repairs might be a little more costly, but, um, the snow removal is a pretty minor part of it.
I think I'm more on the snow removal right now, you know, not including any of the major repairs with it. You know, down the road, just the snow removal.
I really think what we should do is, it, it's, it comes up an awful lot. I think we should have a committee put together a policy in place. So anybody that develops a new subdivision, this is what we have. This is how we're going to treat it. You know, we do have a, a subdivision policy, how they're developed from new. If you're on a gravelled road, yours can remain gravelled. If you come off a paved road, you have to pave it as part of your project. Um, and the maintenance really never, was never really ordered to, to do that. So I, I guess it's been kind of up in the air for a lot of years. And I think it's time to take a stance and this is what we're going to do.
I do too. Because these people in these subdivisions, they also pay taxes. I mean, they should get some kind of services.
All they need is a green light from the board and it'll happen, so.
Well, you've never left anybody high and dry.
No, I, I always told people, you know, if there's a major snowstorm, we're not going to leave anybody blocked in. And then we've done it in the past. I mean, when we had some snow back in nine and ten or whenever it was, we never left anybody stranded and and that's not our intent at all. And, and like I said, we've helped wherever subdivisions that needed some gravel. I mean, we gravel some and so.
Do you know how many miles you're talking about in this, with these subdivisions?
You know, most of these subdivisions ain't, ain't a whole lot. I mean, you know, a couple of miles here, a couple of miles there. And, and one thing about it, we drive right by them anyway. It's not like we got to make any special.
If you had some idea mileage of the, how many man-hours would be involved in something like this? Well, it depends on how much snow we get too, but.
Yeah. Doesn't take long to swipe the snow off with loaders and stuff.
I think you have a good idea to form a committee so we can get something so that way everybody has a yes or no and they know the services that are involved.
Right.
Um, Commissioner Marsh is on that portfolio and with you. And if you want to put a committee together?
Maybe Neil, if you'd be interested in Bernie, because Bernie's got the road portfolio and, and, you know, with his experience in developing and different things, I think it'd be good some, she had some insight on things that, you know, I might miss and stuff, so. I think it would be a really good idea because it comes up an awful lot. So.
And it's fair to those taxpayers to have some services. I mean, I could see, but they deserve to have some services once the developments get put together.
Okay.
Commissioner Messer, are you okay with that?
I guess so. Yes, I will.
Okay.
Okay. Um, other than that, um, I have.
Should we make a motion on the committee that we're going to put a committee together?
Sure. I'll make the motion. Second.
Okay, the committee will consist of Al, Bernie. Oh, discussion, sorry.
Will this committee, forming this committee, follow the, uh, county procedure on committees then? Will we advertise it for, you know, like we do for any public committee? We, we, we don't go out and just, you know, pick one or two people. We let people show their interest, correct? That is a policy of ours. So I'm just throwing that out there.
We can have, um, somebody, we can have a contact.
Well, HR knows how to do it.
Between HR and Mr. Heiser, if you want to open this committee up for a week and see if you have anybody interested?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Well, I, I think it would be good, there's a bunch of them in here. Andrew's here, Jeremy's here, uh, those guys. One of those who are actually doing the engineering on, on these developments would be good to bring in because they talk and deal directly with the individuals or groups that are doing the development. So it would be good to have that mindset, uh, as a conversation piece as well, I think, so.
Okay. Good. Um, one other thing, I, I give out you a little, uh, plat here this morning, a survey plat, and that is located out on, uh, one hundred and fifteenth Avenue across the way where Joel Fitzick's property is. If you look on that plat there, there's a little tract of land, um, years ago when the DOT actually owned Highway ten, they had these little jaunt out some places, a hundred feet wide, then it'll go out to a hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty, then it'll go out of ways, don't come back in. And so in the past, we've, uh, kind of deeded them back to the landowners. I know we had two of them east of Dickinson and I visited with, uh, Amanda was gone, yes, I visited with Jim and Amy a little bit and he had kind of thought it, a deed transfer would work. And there's like one point, three, nine acres. Basically what it'll do, it'll put it back on the tax rolls because why that easement was ever in there, I'd have no idea. So and I think, um, Jim suggested we bring it to the county commission if anybody's got any ideas or, I mean, we would definitely need a motion to do this if you guys choose to.
I, I'll make the motion to do that with, uh, with the state's attorney reviewing the documents and whatever legal things, uh, are involved on that.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Just, just a quick question. I'm assuming Mr. Fitzick would accept the deed if we, if we generated one?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And it's all drawed up. The meats and bonds are here. I, each of you got a copy of it and I can give one to Amanda.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post, same sign. I might just like to go back to the committee. Do we need a second on that and that we are going to follow the policy of the committee and a second on that? And that we are going to follow the policy of the committee? And do we need to advertise it and make sure that anybody that's not part of the committee can show up? I mean, do you, so you don't have 20 people on the committee, but you still have people that can show to give their opinion?
Sure. What does, I'll suggest with Joyda, if she's got, if we got a county's got a policy, which I wasn't annoyed for like committees like weed board and things like that. I know there was applications, but whatever we need to do.
Okay. I don't know if application, I just think maybe just a main contact person, but.
Okay. Oh, we'll look at the policy, see how it reads and go from there.
Okay. If anybody has any questions, they can contact me and I can lead them to the right people also.
Anybody got any more questions about them subdivisions? And now we're gonna proceed. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair, I have a motion and a second on that and not a vote on that, the committee.
Oh, I'm very sorry.
I have a motion by Marsh and a second by Messer, but not a vote.
Okay. I'm sorry about that. Um, on the committee, there is a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Interstate Engineering, James Katemis.
Morning, Commissioner.
Good morning.
Good morning. Just a brief update, uh, design project for the box culvert bridge replacement on 38th Street Southwest. Successful TSNL meeting was held on March 9th with Superintendent Heizer and Jason Fisher from Dickinson District DOT, where all agreed that installation of a box culvert along a realigned roadway was needed. We have been working on right away plating and finer design aspects, taking landowner requests and utility conflicts into consideration. We're also working toward finishing the reporting phase of the project by completing the documented CADDx. Any questions on that project?
I'd like to comment a little too on, on there. I don't know if you're aware of it, if it was before the last meeting, that bridge is actually officially closed now because, uh, it's in this repair. We do have a temporary bridge. I'm waiting to get load rating done. So it'll be a one lane traffic bridge. But as soon as I get the green light from DOT, that we'll, we'll, we'll install that bridge. Cause I don't anticipate getting a new bridge put in until probably late of, of 23. So at least this way the people can, that can still use that road, probably not, nothing very wide. But, uh, that'll hopefully get installed here within the next two to three weeks. So it will be open for traffic.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Highland Engineering, Mr. Nice.
Good morning. Mike Ness, Highlands Engineering.
Ness, sorry.
It's okay. I get it all the time. Um, so update on our work, uh, working on this 80th Avenue Southwest, 15 miles south of Richardson, eight miles east. We're still on track to bidding the project on, in June 10th through the DOT. Um, April 1st was the, uh, fi, the, uh, final plans were due that day, but I got an extension through this week. Should be done. We're waiting on a letter from Chippewa. Um, also on this project, I wanted to make the commission aware of the US Army Corps Engineer changes. So a typical project like this, a small box culvert project can usually keep the wetland impacts or the stream impacts less than point one acres. Well, they have changed the stream impact to having to mitigate anything above point 03 acres. So now usually it was, if you keep it under point one, you usually don't have to mitigate. But through the North Dakota game and fish, the, uh, requirements will, we typically, uh, countersink the box culvert one foot to allow aquatic resource passage. And that usually suffices for minimization or mitigation purposes. So, but now the corps has changed to point 03. And so for example, this project, I'm only impact, we're only impacting point 05. Mitigation will be required at two to one. So I'll be at point one acres. And pretty much the only option is to mitigate from a Ducks Unlimited, uh, mitigation bank at $78,000 an acre. So I'm at point one. So it'll be $7,800 just for this mitigation of the stream for this project. And so expenses aren't getting any better on, on this. So I just want to make you aware of that situation. So.
So that 7,800 goes to Ducks Unlimited?
Yes.
Wow. Okay.
I am gonna put this, it is allowable to put on the construction expense of the project. So I'll add a bid item for, uh, mitigation bank, make the contractor get it and put it on and hopefully get funding through the federal, through the federal highway for it. So, so doesn't get any cheaper. Anybody else had any other questions on that? Otherwise, uh, the project, bridge replacement north of Richardson, eight miles north, four miles east. We're, uh, we don't have an approved funding yet from the DOT, but we decided to go ahead and get the, the environmental clearance process going on that. So we have the SOV letters out. Um, and we'll, we'll start the, uh, CADDx here in a couple of weeks, once we get responses from the SOV letters. Other than that, uh, bridge replacement on 39th Street Southwest. We did the hydraulic survey, did our, uh, HECRAAS modeling and sized the double 78 inch culverts for Al. Uh, this is by Richard Aniluk's place there, southwest of Hebron. So that's what we've been working on. Anybody else have any questions?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Northern Plains, Jeremy Wood.
Morning Commissioners.
Morning.
Few updates, um, starting with construction projects. The 30th Street project at the county line, those final records have been approved by the DOT. So everything was in order. So, um, we'll, uh, process the final payment and then that should be the last thing for that project. Uh, last year's project on 127th and 131st, um, nothing new to report on that, um, other than, um, the grass seeding, which is about the last thing, uh, that is gonna happen. That should happen, um, within about a month. I would say later this month that should be done. Some of our design projects that have been bid, but not built yet, 38th Street, um, Wilson Construction's a little bitter on that one. We're looking at a June bid opening or June starting date for that project. Um, a little bit of an update on 83rd and 86th Avenue Bridge Project South, Richardson. Um, took a while to get there, but, uh, the DOT finally recommended awarding to Martin Construction. Um, if you remember, there was that SNAFU with the, uh, DB requirements. Uh, they finally awarded to Martin Construction. We haven't heard of a, uh, expected starting date, but I would suspect it's gonna be late summer or early fall, uh, maybe September timeframe, but we don't know that for sure yet. Um, another project we're working on, 127th Avenue, south of Bellfield, uh, still waiting for some guidance from the DOT on any other environmental, um, work that we, would be required. So haven't got a whole lot of response on that one. Um, a couple of other projects we're working on is, um, 131st Avenue, uh, Bridge Projects. One is north of Bellfield, one is south of Bellfield. Update on that project, um, excuse me, from the, from the last meeting, the project north of Bellfield did get selected for the House Bill 1505 funds. So both of those projects are gonna be essentially paid for, uh, construction and engineering, uh, through that House Bill 1505 fund. So we actually were able to combine both those projects into one. One project will be built and, uh, bid as one project, but it will largely be paid for with, uh, state funding. And then last project is 32nd and 107th, uh, northeast of town here. Uh, design is essentially done. Core permit has been submitted. Um, we may get a little bit, uh, pushback, just like Highlands did with our wetland impacts. We're at about point 05 acres, which is very similar to what Mike explained. Um, we haven't seen their response, but, um, I'm bracing you for that. That might come up. We might have to mitigate some wetlands. Uh, really about the only thing that we have left to do is acquire easements. We've talked to a lot of the people so far and we have a few left. Um, they're generally temporary easements. Everyone's so far been pretty supportive of it, but there's a lot of landowners in that six and a half mile. So we've reached out to several already. Uh, I think me and Al and, and my team's gonna kind of divvy, divvy up the remaining easements. But I'm hoping the next couple of weeks, all those easements are, are obtained. And then we can, we can go to bid for the grading portion. Um, that's all our intention is just to get the grading done this year and paving whatever, whatever budget allows for that project. And that's all I had for it, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks.
I'm gonna, um, I, everybody's time is important, but I know there is a lot of people here with, for the planning and zoning. Um, I think Steve is on his way, correct? Okay.
Uh, excuse me. Can we do the Vision West first and then jump into that?
Okay.
Cause I know that there's also people, and they are next on the agenda.
Okay. Um, Vision West, Deb Nelson.
Good morning Commissioners.
Good morning.
Um, I brought with me Commissioner Darryl Ducart from Dunn County, who is Vision West ND's immediate past president, um, to visit with you as well. Uh, we're here today, we've actually, we're here probably about three years ago, I think, uh, asking Stark County to consider becoming a, uh, member of Vision West ND. And at that time, uh, you were taking it under consideration. It's taken me quite a bit of time to come back, uh, and get that consideration. Um, so, uh, we're here today, uh, asking, uh, Stark County to become a county member of Vision West ND. Uh, we, uh, work with, um, closely with, uh, the Western Dakota Energy Association. They do all of our, um, lobbying and asking for the money for, for our, our western counties. Uh, Vision West ND provides, um, education, bringing together our counties and cities, networking for quality of life and, and doing the education that WDEA provides, uh, its, uh, its work for. Um, I did present you, provide you, I believe with a list of our, um, priorities that we're working on right now. We have quite a list of priorities. Um, and, and maybe I'll just let, um, Mr. Ducart talk a little bit about what some of those priority areas are, and then I'll come back to you on that.
Good morning Commissioners. Uh, I think first time I've been in front of you guys in my 12 years of service for Dunn County. Uh, visited with many of you and have seen you face to face and shared opportunities and public, other public meetings, but never in your public structure. And, uh, fun to be here. I get to do the same thing tomorrow, what you guys are doing today. Our, uh, Vision West, as you can see up in the screen there, the rural health and behavioral health is a big issue that's going on right now. At the end of April, April 26th and 27th, we have a summit, and it'll be our second summit that is gonna be held in Watford City at the Rough Rider Center. I started working with this very diligently back in, about six years ago. Went through the sessions, haven't been able to pick up a lot of dollars and a lot of money. And behavioral health is a constant growing challenge for our police department, our emergency services, our communities. And it's a taxpayer cost. So what I'm really here today for on that side of it is the hope to have you guys sponsor, be a sponsor at some level at the Behavioral Health Summit. And I believe that your auditor probably has received that schedule for that, uh, scale of level. This, it's up on the board right now from 5,000 down to $600. Two years ago, when I, when we started the campaign, I went around personally touching base by base by base and come up with, I don't even remember the dollar amount, but I come up with a lot of businesses from the Dickinson area that were very interested in what we were doing, how we were gonna run this summit. The key thing that needs to come out of the summit this time, this year, is how do we approach legislation in North Dakota to bring more dollars back to the communities such as Dickinson and our rural communities, your rural cities, your rural towns, your sheriff's departments, your ambulance people? Because the behavioral health issue is a very measuring costly item. So I encourage you to participate at that level. Another thing that we just got done with, and I know some of you Commissioners were at the natural resource, uh, program that we sponsored in Kildare and also in Stanley, North Dakota, which went very, very well. We had state representatives there, uh, that represented the, the Department of Mineral Resources, the Ag Department, the Natural Trust, Natural Resource Trust Department and NDSU and, uh, Native Grasses. And, uh, a very good, very educational opportunity. And as Deb said, we are the educational link for the audience. If you're ever interested in doing some research and study and finding out more about us, just go to our website, Vision West ND, and there is all kinds of information there that you can scroll, scroll through and see how we function and we work. We have a board that takes in 19 counties of operation and we, that board's a constant rolling change, like most boards are. Every year I say we have a rollover of three to five board members and we keep moving forward. It's a good, strong organization. We do no lobbying. We're very bipartisan in that fact. So that's why we are a sister branch of Western Dakota Energy Group, which I'm also a board member on, but we work with them to allow them to do the lobbying for us. So thank you for your time.
Uh, I want to also bring your attention to the affordable and reliable, uh, energy uh, priority that we have just adopted. We're in the process now of developing the goals for that. But it's come to our attention, brought to our attention by many people in, uh, western North Dakota and many, um, key leaders, that we need to do some strong education about, uh, what affordable and renewable energy really is. And, um, making sure that, um, our, um, oil and gas and coal resources are, are, um, uh, staying intact as well as, uh, allowing for, um, our renewable energies as well. Um, but to work together rather than, um, one taking over completely. Um, so we are going to be doing quite a little bit of education in that area, and that's a new priority for us. Um, I'm not going to go through the rest of the, of the information. You have it. So we're really here for two asks. One is, will you become a paid members, member of Vision West ND? Um, and two, will you help sponsor the Behavioral Health Summit that we will be holding the end of April? Um, we aren't asking for a specific level. We're asking you to consider what might be best for you.
I know there's a, um, behavioral health, you know, there was something, some going on with, with the old house, hospital, you know, and that trying to get, is that tied in? Are you tied in with that also?
We've been in communication, yes. We've been working with Hartview.
Okay.
And, uh, have some good information. They're also going to be at our summit.
I, I'll just offer my own comments. I have spoken to Commissioner Ducart and Deb about this in the past and apologize that Stark County hasn't been, uh, more active participant in, in this organization because, uh, what you guys do is, is important, uh, for western North Dakota and particularly important to, uh, Stark County and our communities. So, uh, kudos to both of you for that work. And, uh, Darryl, you and I have become good friends over the years. And, uh, I know you won't be with us much longer as far as, gotta correct that, as far as your official duties.
Thank you.
And so I, I wanna, I want to, for my own, for myself, thank you for all of your, uh, hard work over the last 20 years, is it? And, uh, how you've represented your -- 20 years, is it? And how you've represented your county and yourself. You've done a marvelous job, and I appreciate that. And I would, I'll cut myself off here real quick. I think we need to get our membership support, and I don't see why we aren't visionary, but I'll let somebody else make a motion to that effect. Thanks for giving me the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken.
Both of you.
Commissioner Messer, how does this go through?
Yes.
Am I too loud?
No.
Oh. How does this go through Stark County Development? Like with the sponsors, or, I mean, does this go through them at all, or?
Well, we haven't sponsored Vision West through Stark Development.
Okay.
You know, she's a resource for us.
Okay.
It is still at the county level.
Okay.
That answers your question.
Not really, but...
I mean, I don't think we're, I don't think we're enabled to support this function and other functions similar through the development, through the jobs development portion of the county.
I can answer that question. Stark Development Corp. is a member of Vision West ND. We have been told numerous times that they are a member strictly for economic development and not for the rest of the priorities that we cover.
I stand corrected.
And we do have many counties where the Economic Development Organization is a member, and the county is a member. So, two different memberships, and primarily because of the different priority areas.
Just a quick question while everybody's thinking of which level they want. So, is there any duplication of efforts here? You know, I see the planning and zoning handbooks and those kind of things, and I know Roosevelt Regional Custer also plays a little bit of a role there. So, is there duplication there? Are they going down different paths? Is Roosevelt kind of phasing out?
Thank you for that question. We do not do the planning and zoning. We contracted with a planning company to work with us to develop that planning and zoning handbook. It is available. It's available on our website to any county that wishes to, county or city that wishes to utilize it. It's up to date, and it is, it's a good resource. We do have some planning and zoning people on our consortium who have been willing to work with, particularly some of our smaller communities. I can give you a good example. The city of Flaxton, population 60, was trying to develop a planning and zoning ordinance for their community. They don't have a planner. They didn't have the resources to hire somebody. They contacted us, and our planning and zoning handbook was used to help them develop their planning ordinance in that small town. So, that's how that's used primarily. But we don't do the planning and zoning work at all. We do provide workshops, and we bring in those people who have, and I think Commissioner Franchek, you have attended Planning and Zoning Workshop. We do bring people in who talk about some specific and sometimes controversial topics. We do work with the North Dakota Planning Association to help us sponsor that.
And I'm just looking at, like with the, I think this is great. I mean, I'm not, but I see the behavioral health, and then I see like with the weed control. I'm probably echoing a little. So, like with our behavioral health and Sunrise Youth Bureau, and so do you work with all of those together?
We have invited the Sunrise Youth Bureau in the past to be part of our summit. I think they're attending this year. Two years ago, they were presenter at our summit.
Okay.
So, yeah, we do try to work with as many organizations and agencies that are willing to work with us. Our goal is not to really put our name on anything. You're not going to go out and see Vision West ND on a building or even in an office someplace. What instead we try to do is bring together agencies, organizations, cities, counties. We have, right now, I think I have 84 members, and that includes such broad range from counties to cities to soil conservation districts, chambers of commerce, planning and zoning. Well, no, we don't have planning and zoning. They're part of the counties and cities. But it's so broad, and that allows us to look at all these different kinds of priorities that we have, because we have certain people that are interested in some things, other people who are interested in others. And so, all of our members are pretty active in one way or another.
Madam Chairman, if I may add just a little bit of, if I could bring to your attention the workforce, planning and zoning, childcare, and the economical diversification, them were all priorities six years ago.
Okay.
Them were number one priorities, where today we have them other priorities on the top of that list.
Okay.
So, we move forward. We move forward with the help of NDSU and workforce, but actually, we'd done nine years, 10 years ago, that study was done by NDSU, what is happening with the energy industry out in western North Dakota, how it's impacting workforce. Them numbers are actually still used today in your legislative sessions. Them numbers that we deal with, it was about an $86,000 study that was put together on some grant funds back then. We done the same thing with childcare. We done the same thing with your planning and zoning. We just kept moving, and we changed our priorities. We don't get rid of them. They're still there, but we move forward to the next priority.
And there are many others as well. And with your permission, if you'd allow me to come forward, I do have a regional plan for each of you so that you can see what all of our priorities are. Okay, I can give them to Ms. Richard.
So, if we become a member at whatever level, are you expecting us to have someone from this board as part of that process as well?
We'd hope you do. We can't force you to.
Yeah.
But we hope you participate.
We have...
That makes the plan work.
Yes, right.
We do have Commissioners who attend meetings. We also have people who are designated by the county to, it can be anybody from the county. You could send, you know, you could ask Mr. Josephson to attend. Depends on what's on our agenda for the week, for the meeting. We have six meetings a year, and they're held around the region. Our November meeting will be in Dickinson, and the city of Dickinson is sponsoring that one.
Is the city of Dickinson a member?
Yes.
Okay.
They're a visionary member. City of Williston, city of Dickinson, numbers of small towns. We have all of the counties in southwest with the exception of Slope and Stark.
Madam Chairman?
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm not the Madam Chairman.
I would move that we become a membership level at the visionary, with Vision West.
I'll second that.
So, you are saying Commissioner Messer, the visionary on the, of the?
Not a sponsorship for the second one, for the summit, just for the visionary membership levels.
Okay.
$1,600.
Okay. Okay, I have a motion to become a member at the $1,600 level. Do I have a second? You second it? Okay. Any discussion?
Can we do a roll call on that?
Yes.
Because it's money.
Commissioner Messer.
Aye.
Commissioner Franchek.
Yes.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Commissioner Xander.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carried.
And then our second question is, would you consider being a sponsor of the summit? The sponsor at all levels will allow anywhere from one to three, depending upon the level that you would sponsor, to attend the summit free of charge as far as registration is concerned. And then there are other benefits as well for that sponsorship. We, this is the only way, this and our registrations are the only way that we're able to pay for, for this summit to come to western North Dakota. And this is the only behavioral health conference in western North Dakota.
Chairman?
Madam Chairman?
Yes, I'm sorry.
That's something we could take the sheriff's department's training. I'd like to send three people. So, if we could take 600 out of our training budget, or whatever you, it's the appropriate.
600 would get one free person.
Okay, how many would three get?
Three would get you the champion. But if you're a member, as you are now, you would get the discounted registration as well, if you pay for registration.
So, how much to send two? What do I need to do here?
Send two would be, you'd get, if you sent two...
Can you, ma'am, can you just sign up to be a summit? And if you want to send more than two, can you just pay for the meals then?
Yes, absolutely. You can send 20. We'd be happy.
Okay. And what is it per person?
For members, it's 150.
Okay.
Non-members, it's 175.
Okay.
And there are also CEUs, so sheriff, there are law enforcement post credits.
How many day summit is this?
Two.
Two.
Commissioners?
I guess I'd prefer we sponsor individuals at the 175 level.
It'd be at 150.
Or, excuse me, 150 level, see how many we, individuals we have that would be interested. I think there would be other groups in our county that would be, that would want to send somebody. So, if we could, and this is in November.
It's the end of April.
Oh, in the end of April.
26th and 27th of April.
Gosh, yeah.
So, you want to, as people go, to just pay for them at the 150?
Well, what I was thinking is, say, X amount of people, we would pay the entry fee or the registration fee for this, and then figure out amongst us in the county who would go.
Okay.
You know, I don't know if there's other departments that would want to speak up and say that they would have people interested in going.
It might be helpful if I were to tell you who, we have CEUs for nursing, social work, professional counselors, law enforcement, and there's one more. I don't remember the fifth one. But there, we have a lot of continuing education that helps people with their licensing.
I mean, is five or six a reasonable number that we would pay the registration for? Or is there much more interest in that?
If you're looking at six, I would suggest you sponsor at the $600 level. That would get you one free member, and then you would only have to pay for five.
But the first one, 600, the rest of them are at 150.
It's true.
A little better buy at 150.
Except you get Stark County.
Oh, okay, gotcha. I don't care. I mean, I just...
I guess this is...
I'd like to see us supported. I'd like to see us send individuals who are interested in attending this, and...
Since this is our first year, I kind of agree with Commissioner Messer. We already had donated or became a member at 1,600, and we can just see that who all is interested and can contact Karen at the $150 level.
Thank you. I will get you the link for registration so that you can take a look at all of what's available. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our meeting's going a little bit long. I'm sorry. I know there's a lot of people waiting. We need to take a 10-minute break.
15 minutes.
Okay, 15-minute break, and then after the 15-minute break, we are going to do planning and zoning. Straight from planning and zoning, then we'll go into the fairgrounds building fund. Okay, I would like to go back to the minutes. I'm sorry, there was a mistake. I should have caught it when I read it. The minutes were approved for the February 1st meeting, and that should have been March. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So you're saying the minutes that are labeled February 1st should have been labeled...
Where are we going? To the planning and zoning?
Yes. Okay, going into the planning and zoning?
Good morning, Commissioner Steve Josephson, County Planner. And we've got a few items here today. The first thing I wanted to go through is Fisher Sand and Gravel. They have an annual renewal of two of their gravel pits. And one of them is located on a 30-acre parcel in the southeast quarter of Section 27, Township 140, Range 95. And the second one is a 10-acre site located in the northeast quarter of Section 27, Township 140, Range 95. Both of them were originally approved back in 2013. The conditions of approval require renewal on an annual basis. And that's why they're here in front of you today. And every year since this has been approved, the county commissions have approved, have renewed these conditional use permits for an additional year.
I guess...
Is there any discussion on this or...?
I think... I'm sorry.
I'll make a motion that we approve them.
I think they need to be approved one... I think it's separate motions for each one.
Okay. Well, I'm not exactly sure.
If you take the memo and just...
I know, but I have no idea what order we're in here. Okay, I'll make the motion to approve this conditional use permit for Fisher Sand and Gravel.
Is there a motion? Is there a second?
On the 10-acre one you're talking about?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'll second that.
Approved and seconded. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'll make a motion to approve the second conditional use permit for the 30-acre parcel in the southeast quarter, Section 27, Township 140, Range 95.
Spin a motion. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Okay, thank you. Then we have three items that came from last Thursday's Planning and Zoning Commission. They all are proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance. The first one is ZTA 0122. And it's amendment to both the rules and definitions in Article 5, the zoning regulations. And it would allow for banquet halls and reception halls in both the agricultural zoning district and the commercial zoning district. The both Staff and Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of those changes. And I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions for Mr. Josephson?
So you want to explain that one more time, what you're changing?
Right. We had a couple who were interested in taking their barn and turning it into a reception hall and their zoned agriculture. The zoning code currently doesn't allow that. So this is just to add that. Add that it's called banquet halls, reception halls, to the...
Agriculture.
To the agriculture and commercial zoning districts so that they can apply for a conditional use permit so that they can go forward and do that. And anybody else who may want to.
Are there any... Excuse me. Are there any restrictions on, you know, building code facilities?
That's what I was just going to ask, too.
They would have to be that. That's separate from the conditional use permit application. But yes, certainly before they opened, they would have to work with the building department. They'd also have to work with the fire marshal and whomever else. So, yeah...
That was my next question, too. So, yeah.
Yeah, so they would have to do all that. The conditional use permit just gives them the opportunity to go ahead and do that. I have advised these folks, the Johnsons, to contact all these agencies. And I believe they've started that process.
So basically, what we're saying is that they do have building code enforcements to deal with during the process?
Well, before they actually open, yes. They would.
Okay, thank you.
As well as all the other restrictions. And that's a standard in all of our conditional use permits is they have to meet all applicable county, state, and federal regulations and rules.
And we're changing it for the entire county now, just for this one instance, right?
This would allow anybody in agriculture to come in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission and the County Commission to ask, to be able to do this.
Okay. I make a motion that we approve to add to the agriculture and commercial...
Motion to approve Agenda Item Number 2, ZTA 101-22.
I'll second that.
Proposed amendments to Article 2, Rules and Definitions in Article 5, Zoning and District Regulations, and Stark County Zoning Ordinance adopted October 2nd, 2012, regarding banquet halls and reception halls.
May I have a second?
I... Yeah, I'll get it.
Roll call vote. Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
Commissioner Xander?
Aye.
Commissioner Franchek?
Aye.
Commissioner Messer?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carried.
Okay, thank you, Commissioners. The second item from the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting was ZTA 0222. And these were proposed amendments to Article 2, Rules and Definitions, and Article 3, General Provisions. It updates the county's floodplain management regulations. The county has been a participant in the National Flood Insurance Program since 1971. The county is... Both FEMA and the State Water Commission have been in the process of updating the flood maps throughout Stark County, not just for the county, but all the cities. And in this process, they have been looking at everybody's ordinances to make sure that they are up to date and they meet the minimum criteria for this program. And we've been working with the State Water Commission to, you know, to... On this proposed amendment, we had received a template from them, and this is what they gave us. This needs to be in place by July 5th, which is when the new floodplain maps come into, you know, come into effect. So that's why this is in front of you today. Both the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff recommended approval. And I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Does the commission have any questions for Mr. Josephson?
So, Mr. Josephson, all the underline is new language to the floodplain management ordinance?
To the zoning ordinance, yes.
Okay. A couple of questions for you. On page 9, 3.11.5, sentence 2. Define liberally construed in the favor of the governing body. Please.
Okay. Well, I will try to. That was... I will try to. That's the language that was given to us. But I believe that it means that it's up to the... You know, it's up to the local governments to do the interpretations.
Here's the reason for my question. So the National Flood Program is... It's been a political football. They extended it for six months at a time for funding instead of, you know, long-term concerns. And so part of my concern is, all these new regulations, does it affect the ability for people to obtain mortgages on their property? Because if you don't have... Because if you don't have flood insurance, a lot of times you don't have a mortgageable property. And so, you've studied this more than I. I did a quick read on it. I've got four or five that really kind of concerned me. But I'm just wondering, I understand, you either, you're in or you're out. We don't negotiate with feds, or we don't, with FEMA, we don't negotiate with the State Water Commission. But I'm just wondering if some of these maybe are a little bit of an overreach that are gonna kind of limit what people want to do on their properties to include putting a mortgage on them.
Okay, well, that's, there are banks where they won't make mortgages if the community, if they can't, if people can't get flood insurance through this program. Is that what you're asking, Commissioner?
Well, yeah, I'm just saying, does this change and make it more restrictive for people to obtain mortgages?
No, I would say no. I would say no, it does not. You know, that'll be between the lender and that person. No, that would not. And the other thing, too, is if a, I've seen this, I've seen a community where they did not participate in the National Flood Insurance Program. They were coastal community, they got hit by an unexpected flood. I'd say, what, like 90% of their properties were affected? For communities that are in the National Flood Insurance Program, those property owners are then entitled to loans and grants to build back. And in this community, they were not able, they were not able to do that.
Okay, well, and my other question was the appeal process. And if someone has an issue, I see it directly appeals to the district court rather than the county commission is out of the appeal process?
Here, let me look at that. Because actually, it does set up, I think that that's, if the, I think it actually goes to the county, I think it goes to the Planning and Zoning Commission first. Let me look at that. What page is that on?
Three, page 12.
Page 12, because I think it sets up-
So, yes, Planning and Zoning is involved.
Goes to Planning and Zoning.
The County Commission is not involved, but the Southwest District Court would be involved.
We could always insert something in there that's-
I'm just trying to play it out based on previous experiences of how, you know, the FEMA, the floodplain, or NFIP works.
I don't think there would be an issue if we wanted to put something in there saying that the P and, you know, that the P and Z. I guess, I guess this is something that, you know, if the state's attorney wants to weigh in on, is add an extra step in there, which would be, if someone wants to appeal the, you know, the Planning and Zoning Commission's ruling to the County Commission, they could, you could put that step in there if that's, if that, and then to the district court after that.
Well, if somebody sues, they're probably gonna sue the county, not the Planning and Zoning Board, correct? That's kind of where-
I don't see an issue with adding that into the process.
Thank you.
Any other questions? So do we need to make a motion on that with the additions?
With the proposed amendment?
Yeah, I would, I'll move to approve ZTA O-2, or O2-22, the proposed amendments to the floodplain management with the change under 3.11.1.3, that the appeal process include the County Commission.
Okay, got it.
I'll second.
Approved and seconded, I'll do roll call, Commissioner Messer.
Aye.
Commissioner Franchek.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Commissioner Xander.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carried.
Thank you. And we'll show that language to you before we notice that this has been approved. Okay, all right. The last thing we had here was a, and I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna ask Planning and Zoning Commissioner Dressler to come up here and help with this. There are proposed amendments to Section 619, which was, right now, it's labeled as the wind energy facilities section of the zoning ordinance. And there are a number of, Commissioners, you have a number of proposed amendments to you. I mean, what's your pleasure? Do you want to walk through this and have them explained? Or what would work best for this process? To go through your section by section, or?
I think Commissioners, Dressler could come up and speak and then just speak on it. And if there's questions by the Commission, she can answer them.
Sure. Good morning, Commissioners. Commissioner Dressler with the zoning board. I worked very diligently on this process for the last six months. We were given this task primarily by the public, by public demand. As you know, we currently do have zoning framework, I guess, for wind energy facilities and wind turbines. However, given the public input, that was very extreme at many of the meetings, we were asked to revise these and create some bigger setbacks for wind turbines. Given their changes over the last, oh, maybe five to seven years, they've gotten quite a bit larger. And I'm being told they're getting larger still. The last one, the last meeting, we were told there was some out there at 550 feet tall. So, we really felt that, given these changes, that our current setbacks no longer applied and needed some modifications. So we did work with a subcommittee. I don't know if you'd call it that or not, but it was an advisory committee to our advisory committee. So we worked with many people in the public that volunteered throughout the county and they gave us some really great feedback and really good input. Many of those individuals spent hours and hours researching their particular part of this framework, and I feel like they did a really good job. We also took maybe up to five public hearings regarding this. I'd say three direct and then two indirect, where we heard a lot of the same, a lot of the same comments. And we've been hearing comments for the past seven years. I guess if any of you have been involved in any of the other applications that would be applied here, wind energy applications, I believe the first one maybe was seven years ago. And there was, there was a large public input at that time when that particular CUP got denied. So every single time one of these applications comes up, what we've noticed is, it's probably the most divisive, largest zoning issue you'll ever see in your life. So we felt like this needed, this needs to be looked at hard. It changes the landscape, it changes the use. It's very different from the surrounding community's current development. And I think what we need to look at, and what we did look at with the zoning board, was how is this going to affect us in 30 years and 40 years? And so we were looking at orderly development. And what we were hearing from the public was that currently, these regulations are not giving us orderly development. And they're creating a lot of decreases in property values. They're creating safety hazards, health hazards. It was a very, very large amount of input that we had received. So I do encourage you to look at these very hard. Look at each one. If there's questions that you have, ask them. Amend them if you see fit. But I do ask that you leave it wholly intact, because we did put a lot of time into it. But by all means, definitely look at them and ask your public here today, because they'll give you some input as well. So, thank you.
I just wanted to thank you, Commissioner Dressler. I just wanted to add a couple of things, which is currently in the code, the wind energy facilities, which are normally known as wind farms, they are allowed under the current code as a conditional use permit. And of course, goes to the Public Service Commission for final, you know, for their approval. The other thing that's being looked at is in the industrial zoning district, where it talks about wind generation. Those are the turbines that are on a specific piece of property. And there's really nothing in the code that, there are no development standards for that in the code. That also requires a conditional use permit from the, you know, from the county. And depending upon the amount of megawatts generated, goes to the Planning, to the Public Service Commission for their, you know, for their approval. As Commissioner Dressler was saying, the things that have been looked at primarily have been the setbacks, there have been a number of things that have been added in terms of bonding and also in terms of things that are part of the application, many of which are similar to what the Public Service Commission, you know, Public Service Commission also requires. You know, I think there was a concern that maybe there would be things that, that kind of information would help the county in making their decisions on these things. So as you go through that, I think that's what you'll find. And I think some of the stuff, Commissioner Dressler, if you'll, if I'm right, they were, there were things looked at other communities. And then after that, there were some meetings of the Planning and Zoning Commission, where the Planning and Zoning Commission had their input and made, you know, made their, you know, made their changes. This was approved at the last Planning and Zoning Commission, the changes in front of you.
Right, so we had, the last two Planning and Zoning meetings, we went through, one by one, we went through very detailed with the public. And we talked about each and every one of these setbacks in great detail with the entire board and with the public present. And we did that over two meetings. We made amendments, we brought them back. We also had gotten some input from other agencies and other counties. We looked at some of their, the ones that had had more recent changes to their amendment, or to their framework. And so we tried to look at those that, and we see that there's a lot of them updating right now, doing similar things to what we're doing, because they're facing the same challenges. It's not just unique to Stark County. Stark County is maybe unique because it's so densely populated. So I do feel like there's limited space to where an industrial turbine could sit, just given its impact. You know, most of the time, what we've seen these in very rural areas, Stark County clearly has a lot more obstructions and other existing development that would prevent these to coincide real, in real harmony. And so, really, these have to kind of get to the landscape before anything else gets there. And frankly, Stark County is, in your opinion, too, right, Steve, you've said this, too, is very, one of the more densely populated counties, just given some of our residential zones, there's been a lot of development, as you guys know, and creating kind of a, oh, almost a suburb of Dickinson all around, between Richerton and Dickinson, we're seeing just a lot of residential development with smaller plats. And so, it's just getting, and it's filling in fast. And I don't know, you just kind of have to look at the trend and look at, you know, what are people wanting to do in the future? And do we want to stop our existing developments? So we just have to try and protect what has consistently been here and what is in process at the moment. And then we also looked at, what is oil and gas doing? You know, these, these energy facilities want to be, you know, comparable to oil and gas, and they want to be replacing oil and gas. So what we need to do is take the lessons that we've learned from oil and gas and apply them here as well. Oil and gas also had its challenges in the 80s, and it was, a lot of those challenges were corrected in the 90s and the 2000s with different regulations. I think that we're at a similar level now with wind turbines, where we now have to look at it as it's established. It's no longer in its infancy stages, and it needs to stand on its own and also be able to be utilized, you know, in an orderly fashion with other development around it. So we just need to take a strong look at it and, I guess, listen to our public. That's what we try to do.
Anyone have any questions for either Commissioner Dressler or myself?
Any questions from the board?
I mean, are we, if we go through this, I can ask questions, but let's go through this one by one so that you can-
Okay, so on page 1, I believe, you know, a lot of it was changed so that it covered turbines and the wind farms. There was a, the part about principal or accessory uses was removed, it seemed redundant. Also seemed to affect the property owners who wanted to have those. There were some changes in terms of the application for permit, putting in a fee, a minimum fee, and then a fee for each turbine. In terms of what would be included in the application, there were, there were a number of things that were added in. There was something that the applicant either had to be registered with the North Dakota Secretary of State or be licensed to do business in the state. Talking about how, a written statement saying how this is consistent with the county's comprehensive plan as well with the zoning ordinance. A written statement, a summary statement stating how the state of North Dakota, how this meets the state of North Dakota's energy conversion facilities citing criteria. Also including, and this is state requirement, a biological resource evaluation. Doing an analysis of the project area based upon the, the State Department of Game and Fish did a best practices manual. It came out a few years ago, and it's guidance for, it's guidance for, you know, for companies, people putting up wind turbines, identifying in the county's areas where there are wetlands, where there are, you know, areas of critical concern, where there are wildlife areas. And it would, this is a guide to help them do that. So it would be a state, an analysis of the project area based upon reviewing that. An archaeological resource survey, that's also something that's required by the PSC, so they would be doing that anyway. And then also a written study addressing the potential impact on human and animal health and safety from the proposed project. Then in terms of public hearings, in terms of public hearings, what the, what this group wanted was to notify all property owners within five miles of the project area. The applicant would actually bear the cost, you know, bear the cost of that and would send an affidavit to the county saying that they've done, that they've gone ahead and done that notice. Also struck something out of there, it basically said that if the Planning and Zoning Commission finds they've met all these criteria, then they have to, it shall be approved. This is a conditional use permit, and a conditional use permit, there are other factors besides the ones in here that are considered, you know, as part of this. A demonstration of compliance, asking that the applicant submit a written report every other, every other year, you know, showing that they're complying with the state and county, state and county regulations.
So if they don't comply, what's the penalty once they're-
They can get their conditional use permit, either get a chance to correct it, and if they don't, they could get their conditional use permit revoked. And actually, we don't require this of anyone else, however, there's standard language in every conditional use permit that says that if you're not doing, meeting the terms of this, you know, it can be revoked. Also that meeting, you know, that they need to meet the state's lighting requirements, the lighting that they have to have on there. So if aircraft approaches, the light goes on automatically. Again, that is a state, that is a state requirement. And then, you know, this is something that would happen anyway. If it's approved prior to construction, the permit shall be required to post upon to cover the cost of decommissioning and restoration. Commissioner Dressler, do you want to cover the setbacks portion of it?
Sure.
I think you worked a little closer with that than I did.
Any questions so far, from anyone?
I have a couple, but I'll just wait until you're done.
Well, go ahead, go ahead.
Let's do the whole thing. No, let's do the whole thing.
It's quite long.
I don't want to interrupt.
Once you get past the setbacks, there isn't that much more, so.
Sure. So the setbacks portion of it, let's see, we tried to make sure we wrote, or wind turbines, and any place we wrote wind energy facility, just so that it was clear that it also applied to just one turbine, not necessarily a group of turbines. Structures and facilities, we had a court case recently in North Dakota that talked about this. So this was, talked about in length with the public. Instead of just saying structures or facilities, we- of just saying structures or or facilities, we we wrote capable of habitation or capable of being used, um, just because there was a, there was a cabin or something that was maybe not in the best of shape, um, that was used seasonally. And I I believe a wind turbine had to be, it was placed too close to that structure, and it had to be removed. The court ordered it to be removed. Um, so we we thought we would clarify that language there.
Yeah, if I can just interject a second.
Sure.
Um, pre, what the the proposed change to the codes sets two setbacks from 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 those structures. One is for participating property owners, and the other one is for non-participating property owners. And actually, that's consistent with changes that were made to the to the century code. I believe it was about twenty fif- twenty sixteen, twenty fifteen, or whatever. There used to be no setback from non-participating property owners, and that was introduced into the the century code. So this splits it up. It before, it just said from the nearest dwelling, dwelling or or building or whatever, and it splits it up now between participating and non-participating property owners.
Yeah. Um, so so so, yeah, we've got A and B, that that's splitting up between participating and non-participating. Um, we have the participating, uh, a little bit closer because we're assuming that those folks would would, um, have a say in whether or not they're participating. Um, so they're allowed to go a little closer, whereas non-participants, um, the setback, uh, a minimum of two miles is what we're setting back from a non-participant structure or home. Um, also, this, there's a variance in here. So if a non-participant, which we formally would think of as somebody whose whose land occupies a structure or has agreed to allow their land to host a wind turbine, would be the, what we considered are a participating landowner. Now, I think what we're trying to do here is create participating landowners out of non-participating landowners. So, uh, of the non-participating landowner and/or the landowner who may not have a turbine directly on his property or her property, um, may allow a variance to the the company citing that turbine on another person's property to, um, allow for it to be closer to their house. So we allowed a variance at the end of this. But what that does, it at least gives that non-participating landowner a s- a voice, um, in this in this situation, since they're greatly affected, um, by a neighboring wind turbine. That was one of the largest, I guess, one of the most overwhelming, um, public inputs was that we we increased that setback, um, by, and and are we, we're not the highest in the state. There is also one that's at three miles. Divide County is at three miles from a person's home. We initially started with three matching theirs, and then we we went down to two. So that's where we're at in this particular proposal. Uh, property property line setbacks, um, we changed that to, uh, one mile of of any property line. Primarily, the reason for that was due to many documented instances of of debris, uh, that can go up to one mile. We felt like whether you have a house there or cattle there or whatever you have in within your property line, you should be protected. Um, and again, a variance may be granted by that landowner to the, um, wind tower company or whoever's placing the tower to, you know, waive their right to that setback. Um, we talked about wetlands. We decided to take that out. So that's that's back out of this particular, mostly because it got a little complicated. The National Wetland Inventory was more extensive than we thought.
Well, they actually get to ask for elsewhere, so.
But not at this level, though. Oh, PSC does, yeah, but...
And we're asking them to show that they're meeting PSC's standards.
Right, right. Um, public roads, this was some input Steve had from, um, his collection of inputs over the last seven years. Um, one of the major, uh, complaints was some of these major highways listed, that we set them back at least one mile from the nearest edge of the roadways. Um, safety is obviously part of that, but then also, um, you know, just being a gateway into your communities, allowing for that intense residential and/or business development along those roads, um, to allow those those channels to stay open for future development.
And not too in the case of the Enchanted Highway and Old Highway Ten, which are seen as being scenic and rustic to, you know, to not be a visual, not to have a visual impact on those.
Yeah, there was many groups that came forward at one of the, at one of the applications asking for this because of, uh, um, Old Highway Ten, uh, some of the historic, uh, roads, uh, historic markers that are placed there for travelers. Um, apparently, they don't want to see them along those roads. Uh, we we clarified some language and make sure every, our intention was that every, uh, distance listed was the that that was consistent to the top of the blade. Um, so in E, we we just clarified that, um, wind turbine height, and we defined wind turbine height in our definitions definitions page. So we just, uh, changed that so that we could be consistent. Uh, shadow flicker, um, we got this off of of some, um, websites that we were trying to look at for shadow flicker. Shadow flicker is is a kind of an intense subject. People get real excited about this, of course, because if you can imagine a strobe light in your house. Um, so we we, um, used some guidance from, is this the, was it the state?
I think that it might be, but I know a couple of the local governments have that also.
Yeah. Uh, again, that's a very difficult thing to say, that you should, that you should allow thirty hours per year in your house, but, um, but that's, that's what we came to just based on standard information that we found out there. Again, if I think if we allow the other setbacks to stay that I previously read, shadow flicker will be eliminated. Noise as well, um, I think this one also will be eliminated to a great extent if we allow the, um, previous setbacks to increase. Noise is one of the largest complaints that we've heard from landowners in the area and other areas that we've talked to that have that are within, um, even a mile or a mile and a half of these turbines are very noisy, um, despite the fact that they say they're not going to be noisy. They are very noisy. Uh, and so we you hear a lot of complaints regarding no- noise. It's a very difficult thing to police noise. Um, currently, the setbacks we have are not are not large enough because we've got a lot of complaints regarding noise. So we know that that this noise limit is being violated currently. North Dakota Century Code has set a noise limit, but how do you police that? Do you want to police that as a county commission? Because because I wouldn't. Uh, and that's how we thought of it as, let's stay back far enough from people's houses that we don't have to be the noise police. Um, because it's very, it's it's one of those things that creates the health effects, um, that many people complain about is is regarding the infrasound, um, which is very low frequencies, and then also the regular frequencies that you can hear as well, um, are where a lot of the, uh, health issues start gaining ground. So that's another reason why we're we're looking at setbacks from residential housing. Uh, there's to increase. Um, let's see, D. So we we used some similar language, um, and we were asked to put this in, I think, by one of the government agencies, that we we just look at protecting, um, some of the transmission issues that are occurring regarding TV, radio, and other personal communication systems. We we put a value on that just so that it wouldn't be hindered by very, very small communication, um, systems. So we we put a value on that. Um, whether that value is big enough or or too big, I guess you guys can decide, but that's what we came up with.
I think that may have some other existing ordinances around the state.
Uh, again, if it if it's a s- a s- if it's not an issue for that particular company who owns that, that, um, antenna or transmission reception receptor, then they can also waive with a variance. So we're, we tried to put variances in a lot of these that we felt were, um, something that may or may not be affected. And if it's not affected, then likely these companies who own these antennas would sign off on that or or could sign off on that. Um, we put a maximum height in, mostly because we felt like, right now, I I think three fifty to to four hundred feet is what we have, um, currently.
We have some under four fifty.
Four fifty, oh, four fifty. And we felt like the problems surrounding them were great enough that we just didn't want to go any higher, I guess. Um, who was it that you talked to? Was it the PSC that said, "That's a good idea"?
Yeah, they...
They said, "Good job on that" because I think they would like to do the same. So they're looking at, obviously, all kinds of similar, uh, debates, and so the PSC directly commended us on that particular one. Um, any questions so far? Um, maintenance and abandonment. We felt like one of the biggest problems that may may come up in the future with these wind turbines is going to be companies deciding they no longer want to own them because they have no existing value, uh, at the end of their lifecycle. So we're trying to prevent, um, abandoned wind farms from just sitting on the landscape. Uh, so we put some language in here so that we had a little bit of a a policing over that to say, if if you've abandoned your wind turbine and you haven't used it for a hundred and eighty days, it it allows the county to start asking you, um, to go through the process of removing that wind turbine, that you can't just indefinitely leave it stand. And prior to that, we didn't have any language that we could use to to force them to take it down if they're no longer, if they're no longer operating. Decommissioning and reclamation. Um, we also feel like this is something that the Public Service Commission is going to be revising on their own as well, or at least that is our our hope. Um, given the recent estimates by wind companies themselves, uh, regarding removal of a wind turbine and the costs associated with decommissioning it, uh, we feel like the current bonding is is lacking. Um, there's been a lot of estimates out there, but many of them exceed seven hundred thousand dollars. Um, I believe there was one recently that was over a million that they estimated, um, for decommissioning. So it just depends on who you ask. But a lot of this is coming from the companies themselves citing, you know, what it is that that is going to cost them to remove it. So we put some language in, um, to try and increase. What we're what we're not wanting to see is is, um, companies who form smaller LLCs or independent companies, a lot of them will form these, and they'll own these wind turbines in a, a very tight company, and their only asset within their company is these wind turbines. So when their useful life is no longer there, and they decide they no longer want to use them because the technology's outdated or what have you, um, it's fairly easy for them to close up shop and just leave. And then your your bond is all you have left. Um, and so we're trying to trying to avoid a real disaster. Like, we do have wind turbines in this county, and we don't want to see in twenty years that that they turn into rust buckets like we've seen in other counties. So we feel like this is a big deal. I think it's actually one of the biggest things that landowners don't realize when they sign these contracts is that they may be stuck with removal costs, and that's certainly not what they signed up for. Yeah.
I'll interject. The PSC does, Public Service Commission does, does have required decommissioning plans, but this ordinance didn't specify that. So it's like, just show us upfront, you know, during the during the conditional use permit, what it is that you'd be committed to that.
Right. And also, I think theirs was quite, uh, it wasn't quite sufficient for removal. Um, it's, and so we felt like we should increase that bonding. Um, and really, that's something you should look at every couple of years to make sure you understand the true cost of removal. I don't know that we even do know the true cost for sure. It's one of those things where we know it's, we know the blades can't be recycled. We know, um, the cost of cutting those towers down. It's a very tough metal, and it's very difficult to cut. So in order to even recycle it, it takes a lot of inputs, a lot of dollars, a lot of labor. Um, and a lot of times, that labor exceeds the payback for the metal. So at that point, it becomes something you will would have to subsidize, um, somewhere else in order to to pay for that. A lot of them will cite the cost of the or the benefit of the recycle, um, recycled steel and what the, you know, the value is there. But in many cases, they're not figuring the cost to cut it. And and so there's just very little value, if any, left at all by the time you're done cutting, if you can find a company to do that, from what I've been told. So it's it's getting to be, it's going to be probably our number one issue in the next twenty years as these older turbines start becoming, um, decommissioned and abandoned. So we just wanted to get ahead of that. I believe the current bonding that we have on the towers in Stark County, um, if anyone has this number, maybe you could jump in, but it's it's maybe ten percent of of what we felt was actually needed to cover the cost of decommissioning, something like that. Might not, might not have even been that much. It's very, very low per turbine, um, especially given the numbers we've seen, uh, on estimates. And a lot of the estimates we saw were from twenty seventeen, so they weren't even, they weren't even updated to today's standards of inflation.
Maybe that's what we should go to next, is the bonding requirements.
Yeah. So the bonding requirements, um, we're asking for a surety bond payable to Stark County. Um, and you can read through that, but it's essentially language that Steve put in, um, to, or we we put in as well, yeah.
And I think the amount there was the minimum was...
Minimum of, yeah, six hundred and fifty thousand is what we what we ended on, yeah.
Or otherwise.
Or, yeah, other, or you guys could could change that as well. But that was our recommendation based on the the information we found out there.
And I think a lot of that language on that page is standard. I think that's standard bonding language.
Again, we we wanted to have a some teeth in it. If they didn't have a bond, um, if they're out of compliance, we set an amount there. Um, we also made sure we put or determined by the county commission in many, many of these places so that you guys could have the the discretion in case you decided to increase that. If you decided to change it, you would have to go through the amendment process otherwise. So this language provided you guys flexibility there. So we're not, um, it's not hard coded in. It's it's still flexible, uh, at the discretion of your board. Uh, and we felt like that was, that was the only way to do it. And otherwise, definitions we would have as well.
There's...
And you can talk through them.
There. So there are proposed definitions for, I gotta get my reading glasses.
Oh, I can read them. Um, so some of the definitions that we had to change in order to, uh, concur with this new language that we had in the other section, wind turbines, um, you can see some of the changes we made, um, was mostly to...
I don't, I don't, I don't think we have that. Does anybody...
Oh, you don't have that?
Okay.
Do you have a couple of them? No?
Yeah, I bet. Apologies.
Do you have one for yourself?
Yes. But we'll just read them into the record. So the recommended, the recommended changes were, under wind turbine, the, it currently says, "A wind..." it currently says, "A wind energy conversion system which converts wind energy into electrical hydrogen compressed air or some other energy carrier, and includes the turbine, blade, tower, base, and pad transformer, and all other structures or improvements that are used or associated with the wind, with the energy conversion system." And then, "Wind turbines measuring less than 50 feet in height will be regulated as a utility." And then, there is a definition of height that was put in here, which is, "The height of the wind turbine shall be the measurement in feet, and begin at the ground, at the base, of the wind turbine, and extend to the farthest extent of the wind turbine blade, the tip of the blade." "A non-participating property owner is defined as any landowner except those on the property. A wind energy facility or wind turbine is located pursuant to an agreement between the landowner and the wind energy facility or wind turbine owner." And then, "Participating owner, a landowner whose property is under lease or other property agreement with the owner or operator of a wind energy facility or wind turbine."
Are there any questions?
I got just a couple.
Okay, Commissioner Zander?
And I'm going to run through my questions, and then I'll just listen. You know, we're talking about the bonds, first of all, and who tracks the bonds once the project is up and running? And who tracks that going down the road for 25, 30 years? Is there is there
You should think that that bond stays current.
Well, regarding a bond in general, if you're listed as a recipient of that bond, so Stark County is the recipient of that bond, if that bond is discontinued or the person paying it stops paying it, you get a notification from that bonding company. So, you would get notified at least, and that's every bond. Every bond company works that way. But otherwise, yes, that's that's standard.
So, failure to maintain that bond would be giving authority to the county to shut that tower down, or the farm down, so to speak.
Right, you could revoke the CUP, yeah.
And would you be revoking it just for that particular tower? Or that company's farm?
As far as I know, what you guys currently have, it's you're creating a whole site bonding, so I think it's one bond for the whole property of all, at least that's what we've found in the one that's here. So, I assume that's how you would do it, and whether it's one tower or 200, your bond would have to encompass all of those turbines.
Okay. So, the $650,000, is that for the farm or for each individual?
Per turbine.
Okay, good. And then, other question I have is, on the transmission of electricity generated, and the and the transmission of that power to the substation or wherever it goes, is there anything in there? Does this ordinance, should that include any language regarding enforcement of regulations on the power transmission lines? And towers that are built in accordance with moving electricity from one end of the state to the other? And those towers, if I'm not mistaken, are they're large, too.
They're large, and I think they're also regulated by Public Service Commission, but I know as part
Or is that a whole nother issue?
I guess that would be a whole nother set of setbacks. I don't honestly know currently what they are, but yeah.
I can move my wind tower over here, but my transmission line tower might be 250 feet away from, you know, somebody's home, right? And so, we don't have any meat in the
Transmission, there's a separate agency that controls transmission.
I know that. So, that's, my question is, do we need a whole nother set of policy for that particular part of the anyhow, there's something to think about?
Off the top of my head, there probably is setbacks for those in another section. I just don't know off the top of my head, but we should look into that for sure.
And the Public Service Commission does regulate those also. But are you just talking about transmission lines just for wind farms? Or any transmission lines?
For that matter, a transmission line is a transmission line. Is a transmission line whether it's coming from a coal-fired facility, or a wind, or a solar, or whatever. And I'm not trying to put roadblocks out there, but I'm saying, is that something we need to address?
I think in this particular set of rules, we don't, but we have another set of rules in another section likely, right? But you're right, I think those are getting bigger as well.
Yeah, anyhow, I'm not going to belabor that, but I think it needs to be addressed eventually.
We can come back, certainly, we'll look at in our zoning ordinance and also the state regulations, because I know to get transmission lines, you do have to come through Public Service Commission for them.
Just, I have one or two more questions, quick ones. On the decommissioning, are we following, obviously, we'll be following our rules, but are there state rules out there? And are their rules weaker than ours recommended ones? Or are they better than what we have? In the sense of
Can't go, we can't go weaker, like, they won't allow us to, but theirs were weaker as far as the dollar amount that they were requiring.
And that's subject to change all the time, is it not? By there. And then, thank you. When it comes to decommissioning those, is the state have a because I know it was talked about several years ago, that the state would have a fund established for that purpose in the event of a failure or abandonment?
That's a great idea. I've said that for a while now. We have one with grain, an indemnity fund for elevators. I don't see why you wouldn't have one for, like, and I hope they do that, but they haven't so far. But I know I'm sure that's going to be something they'll end up doing because the bonding on a lot of these existing older properties or older applicants were, not here, but throughout the state, were very small bonds, very small.
Yeah, and when I think about it, you know, the state has the most to gain by this because of their tax revenue. And are they going to just establish another, one of their little funds to divert taxpayer money into? Or are they going to establish a fund for the purpose of decommissioning? Because, quite honestly, I think, I think that's the will ultimately be, if it's not addressed, will ultimately be the biggest financial consequence that Stark County would face, bigger than COVID.
Yeah, I agree. That's why we looked at this. We thought, there's a big hole here. And the state is likely working on it, but they deal with a lot more politics. And likely, they've not done anything because of those politics, but it would be expensive for them, for sure, and I'm sure that's not something they're going to dive right into, but no doubt, they had to have looked at it.
And the reason I bring that up is because of the number, a large number of good people in the audience that have worked diligently, as well as you, on this proposal, and thanks for all your hard work on that, too, by the way.
Thank you.
But this needs to continue, and the state needs to get involved.
Yes.
You know, I referred to, you know, like, the legacy fund. I don't know how many I don't think anybody in here knows how many billions of dollars that that legacy fund has grown to. And is it doing any good for anybody at this point? I don't know. It's not for me to answer, but I think I'm done.
I just have one question to follow up for Steve when Mr. Zander brought up the bonding. So, when I looked back, and, you know, it took me a while to find the bonding, so, that's yearly. So, do you make sure that that is paid and that's kept up yearly from the wind turbines of the Brady?
They don't make a yearly payment for the bonding. You mean updating?
Not a yearly payment, but that it's updated and it's current.
We currently don't do that.
But you would get noticed, though.
We would get noticed. Okay, that's what you're saying. We would get noticed, but where would the notice?
At least, that's how all the bonds I've ever done work. Like, if I would stop paying
I think we had this discussion once before.
If I would stop paying my bond, whoever's the recipient of that bond legally has to get noticed that that bond isn't dropped.
I see what you're saying. So, something would have come to the county commission, is what you're saying?
You can sort of check into it to make sure with your bonding company, but that's how I understand it, yes.
Excuse me, I'm sorry to interrupt. One more question. The email letter that was sent out on March 21st from a state's attorney, has all of these questions been addressed, that the legal questions that
Yep, so we went through it at the last meeting, and then the changes you see before you are amendments to our previous version. Since she had commented in between our last two meetings, so then we made those adjustments, or we discussed it with the board at the last meeting, yes.
And I Amanda, thank you for doing that because that's all the lawsuit questions.
Well, and I was just looking at it. There's a few things that I had said I don't think necessarily got in there on the setback subsection A with the participating landowner. I still think there needs to be variance language in there. The variance language just needed to be changed, and I don't see any see any in there under subsection A.
Did you maybe have an example you'd want to give this board instead of
It was a little bit different. That was a little bit different.
As to what you'd like to see? Yeah, I think that was maybe what we got off on the last, if we got off on the last one, we didn't change it the way you wanted. Definitely let us know, or let this board know what your exact language might look like.
Yeah, I can kind of put me on the spot, but it's essentially just going to be a variance from all the legal owners of the participating, you know, structure. The one question I do have, and I don't know if it's relevant or not, is if they're participating landowners, do we even need a setback? Why are we protecting the land owner that's willing to participate? Like, can't they make that decision with the wind turbine company on how far they want it setback from their structures? I don't care either way, I'm just asking. But I do think that, whatever way you go, some variance language needs to be put in there.
I don't know if you want my opinion on this, but I'll give it anyway. The reason we did that is because of safety of flying debris. We put a minimum in there just because, in case this landowner doesn't know, ice can hit their house, or some of these various other things would become, and that's that's also a problem, is the people that sign up but don't necessarily quite understand what they're signing up from. Do we want to protect them and that particular property from harm? Physical harm, and that's what we thought here was, since there is a physical possibility, and this doesn't just happen sometimes, like, this happens way more often than you know, where these turbine blades just obliterate in the wind, or various ice comes shooting off of them. Like, you don't want to be any closer than this, and I feel like we put it in just so that people would be protected, and I don't know if that's our place or not as far as the county, but I felt like there's many, many other laws that we have that protect people from themselves. I thought that, as a committee, we couldn't ignore all the the physical dangers of being too close to one of these, and we just didn't want some maybe older couple or somebody who didn't have an attorney read through this, get duped into having physical damage to their home, or their lives, or their cattle, or whatever it might be, being too close. You just in all the research, we saw you don't want to be closer than this, but that's obviously at the discretion of this board.
And I think where that came from also is with the participating landowners that do have them. They wish that they, they now wish that there were some regulations in place because now they have them, and they know what it's like to be around them, how close it is, even though it's on their property. And they wish they would have had more knowledge and more protection.
They unfortunately get told a lot of things, and then they have to sign a gag order in a lot of these contracts, and so they they don't get to talk about these things very often, or they would be at the possibly be sued by the company. So, you don't get to you don't get to hear in the public very often in writing or whatever. You hear kind of quietly, people talk about these things, but ultimately some of these contracts are very like, they're overpowering to the landowner, and they don't always understand what it is they're signing, and I know that from personal experience and talking to some people, but it's definitely something I feel like a little bit of protection for the landowner needs to be in place.
Got a couple comments?
Okay.
First of all, I think the work you guys did is amazing. It'd probably be a standard that a lot of other counties are going to look at in the future.
Grab your mic, Bernie, please. Thank you.
I think the work you did is amazing, and I think that your work here will probably become a standard for some of the other counties to take a look at when they're going through these same problems. So, if a bond gets dropped, and we shut down the turbine or whatever, so if when it comes down to taking it apart, that bond is gone, and we're responsible then, or what?
I think the bond only gets triggered if that company goes bankrupt or leaves. I mean, there we the company that puts the tower up, and/or whoever he sells it to, is responsible to decommission it according to these rules. When it becomes a problem is when that company no longer is in business or completely dissolves. And that's what they've seen historically happen, because a lot of the companies that own these these little subdivisions, like I said, they're empty shell companies with these turbines as their only asset. And that's the problem, really. Otherwise, if they're a legitimate company that's still in business, and they decide to decommission, that does happen, too, all the time, and they'll pay their own way.
If they don't pay the bond, and then we're responsible for it.
Right, if there is no bond, and they go away, now it's up to the landowner, or, well, really, the landowner, not necessarily you guys, I don't, but we're trying to protect.
We gave them permission, too, to do it, so I would think we're somewhat responsible.
You might be, I don't know, but at this point, maybe that's a legal question for Amanda.
When a company sells from one to another, that bond transfers with them? Does somebody follow that?
That's what we're Yeah, that's what we're trying to put in place here, is that when it gets sold, it goes from this company to that company.
About inflation, I mean, do these bonds take into effect for any inflation?
Our current language does not.
And 20 years from now, I mean, inflation's eaten up half of that bond.
Right, our current language does not. We went round and round about how you could put that in language to and maybe you can easily do that, adjust it for the if there's a standard government inflation marker that you could reference. I'm not smart enough to know that, but maybe Amanda.
Aren't you, under paragraph B, saying all bond amounts must be adjusted on a biennial basis to account for the U.S. Consumer Price Index inflation? That's in here, so
Yeah, but we're also hard coding it at 650, so I don't know if that needs to be also put in right there? Or we're starting at 650, and then we're
Yeah, and I don't know if there's a if indexed bonds are even available, the people in the financial industries would have to do that, so the question I would have on the bonds then is if you put an initial, if Company A puts in the bond for 650, so everybody's clear, that's a one-time payment that covers the life of the facility.
Right.
If you index that, and all of a sudden, that number goes from 650 to 700, and Company A is not financially strong enough to get rebonded, what's the consequence for that?
Essentially, elimination of the conditional use permit. Or starting the process, yeah.
Okay, but the 650 would still be in place? Because they paid for that.
Right, right, the 650 would still be in place. And that's kind of why we looked at the every-other-year evaluation that they come to the, and we figured out that they come to the, and we figured at that time you guys would adjust it for inflation. We wrote the language in there, but obviously then it has to be, there has to be a trigger. And that's why we felt like the two-year mark, every other year they would come before your board to just make sure everything is in compliance and then look at the bonding. And then that would trigger potentially a different bond size depending on the inflation over the last two years.
And with that, I think it's very important with that because nobody, I mean, the bond that was put in, in I think 2015, it took me a while to find it. I mean, there's nobody monitoring that to make sure it's in compliance, to make sure it's looked over, to make sure that company hasn't switched to another company. I mean, that is just sitting out there and as a county.
This language would change that, yeah.
And everybody in your committee is very, apparently because these are the setbacks you gave us, everybody's pretty happy with the setbacks you guys established?
Yeah, as far as I'm aware, yes. Well, and we discussed it with the board too. So we did make, I would say not everyone, maybe Dean would like to see a lot larger. But we made compromises within our group and we did a little bit of ad hoc voting, I guess. And then we also made sure that the zoning board was aware that they were the ultimate decision makers and that they looked at it individually as well. So it wasn't necessarily our small group, but that was completely in agreement. But we certainly tried to go down the middle of the road, not one extreme or the other.
Any more questions?
Yeah, I got a couple. So the, just so I'm clear, you've studied this, Danine and Steve, much more than I. So the maximum height of a wind turbine, 500 feet to the top of the blade, okay? Does that distinguish between the farmer who wants to put up one tower and the wind company that wants to put up 100 towers?
Anyone under 50 feet was not part of this, right?
500 feet, you're saying?
So if you're sub 50, you're exempt from this. You're a utility. But then you have a minimum floor height of 20. Does that apply across the board?
Oh, from the ground to the top of the blade?
From the ground to the bottom of the rotation.
Yep. That's existing. Yep. That's your current code.
So if the farmer doesn't want to be regulated, he puts up a 49-foot turbine or wind tower?
And that 20 is only for a wind turbine that'd be over 50 feet. Anything under, there is currently no.
Okay.
Yeah, currently no.
He or she could come down to 10 feet or whatever he thinks is safety or whatever the company would tell him. Okay. So the, some of the questions, do you also distinguish between private business and the wind towers? And where I'm going with it is this is being forced, a lot of this green electron stuff is being forced down upon us, right? I mean, we had presidential candidates from 2008 who said they were going to shut down the coal industry and they were going to force green, they were going to force wind and solar down upon us. And we're seeing that more and more affecting additional industries. And so my question is if something comes down that some of our bigger manufacturers, I don't care. I think Susie Soboluk raised the question. If Donut Hole, because they produce food or one of these other industries have to bring electron, green electrons to their site in order to hit a market, you know, what's your thoughts on that? I know you don't address it, but-
Anything, this is obviously Stark County. Any of those smaller businesses would be Dickinson and they would have their own. However, Public Service Commission would not allow you to put one in the middle of town in a business, no matter what. Their setbacks are already too great to per se put one right on a private property in the middle of town, if that's what you're saying.
Well, not really, but I mean, there's manufacturing industries, not only in Stark County and other places, that come outside of the city ETZ controls. You drive around there. I'm just wondering your thoughts on this. It's not, I just want to make sure everybody's on the same page.
I guess we tried not to take geopolitical, like, into this. We tried to look at it just from an orderly development standpoint. As a zoning board, I don't think it's our place to, I guess, bring politics into it. What we're trying to do is look at what's happening, what's happening around us and how we want the next 50 years to look like. Unfortunately, politics change every four years with a new president. So it's hard to change your ordinances based on politics and political landscape just because they change that so fast. And so I would encourage you to look at it as a development side. And that's what we, as the zoning board, we listen to the public. Everyone really loves the idea of clean energy until it's in their backyard and it's affecting their everyday life. And unfortunately, this particular technology affects them so dramatically that they can't ignore it and they can't. And you're asking them to bend for the greater good. You're asking them to make sacrifices that no one person should be asked to make and financially, as well as health-wise and safety-wise. So we tried to look at it simply from a purely individual standpoint as far as orderly development goes. And since we're rural, as this is usually in rural areas, it's oftentimes those single farms or those smaller people that don't have the resources to move or to change or to take that hit to their property value. And we just felt that those folks needed to be included in the decision process and that's what we're trying to do here. I'm not saying that you can't cite within these guidelines. What we're saying is you should have everyone's input and make sure everyone's aware of the consequences for the next 30 years of placing this because it's obviously creating a lot of public backlash and a lot of public outcry. And they're clearly being affected. So now what are we going to do about it? And how are we going to protect them going forward? And that's what we tried to look at. I did not try to get into politics in any way.
Well, unfortunately is part of the process, right? I mean, like I said, this is being forced. If there wasn't the Q45 subsidy, there wouldn't be any wind towers here. And if I don't see another wind tower, I'd be fine with that. You know, they get priority on the grid. The economic benefit to the state of North Dakota, 1 kilowatt or megawatt of power from coal versus 1 megawatt from wind, it's a-
I can tell you, we're not the only county dealing with this and we're not the only state. California wants it the most and they can't hardly cite a turbine to save their lives because the people are pushing back so hard in the same manner. And so I think the only way to make changes that you want to see are to do it at your local level and definitely, yeah.
They're citing one out, three miles out in the ocean off of Long Beach, California, because they can't get it on private property.
Right, right.
So that's my point. I'm, don't worry about the wind tower companies. I worry about private individuals who make a conscious decision to pursue alternatives in this regard. That's what I'm worried about. It's, you know, it is a restriction. I think what you're talking about probably fits and blends that if an individual owner wants to come in and he or she can talk to the neighbors more than one mile or, you know, whatever the setbacks that you're working on, we can do it. But I just want to make sure we're not restricting because I think if you talk to some people that are trying to market their product, they're concerned about it, you know? So if the private individual, just, I'm just going through a couple of notes. If the private individual wants, puts up one tower, does he or she have to come in compliance with the game and fish provision that you have in here and the other one, the ecological statute as well? Do you know?
Yeah, any one or set of towers would still have the same impact.
Okay. Do you know, is that a costly study? Anybody know? Dean?
It's required by the PSC as well.
Okay, even for a private individual, one tower?
Yes.
Depends upon the wattage.
It's based on wattage, okay. And just again, sorry. Like I said, I'm not worried about the big guys. I'm worried about the little guys. And so if you decide to put one on your farm, more than likely, most farmers aren't registered with Secretary of State. I'm just wondering if you can't allow something to where if you're a private operating farm that doesn't have to register with Secretary of State and you elect to do this, couldn't we kind of work on that to where they didn't have to go ahead and do that as well?
I think the language was changed. It was either registered with the Secretary of State or licensed to practice in the state of North Dakota. So are farmers licensed to practice in the state of North Dakota? No.
No.
No, but you can add additional language if you want there.
I'm just, it's not a make or break deal.
We tried to accommodate for that, but we modified it twice to do that exact thing. If there's any other language you could think of that, like I said, we couldn't come up with any current technology that was for private use that was greater than 50 feet. So we felt like a lot of those folks wouldn't be affected by this. If they get much bigger, they have to go on the grid because they have to put their power somewhere unless they have massive battery storage. So I don't know any technology that's currently, and we couldn't come up with any that was currently being used by private individuals that weren't like those real small, small units. So I think we have successfully protected all of those real small private units, at least we think we have. And if it comes to be a problem in the future, no doubt you'll hear about it.
So if technologies change, we can change as well?
Of course, yeah.
Going back to the 6.193, the public hearing, the second paragraph there talks about the applicant's response for mailing out within five mile miles, but then the next sentence is the prop, you want to be responsive or whatever?
Yeah, that needs to be changed.
We can make that consistent.
Should be the applicant, right?
Yeah, that was a typo. We noticed that after the, after it was sent out. So yes, that does need to be changed. I thought you did change that actually.
And one of the earlier versions said if the, if a wind farm was transferred ownership, that the process started over. That's no longer applicable, correct?
No, that's changed.
Okay.
And do you have written down what Ms. Ingelstad wanted on hers on the very beginning?
We might have to have her interject her exact language there.
You mean about having a variance for the set, for the participating property owner setback?
I think we attempted to do it the first time, but we obviously didn't do it very well.
That's the one you talked about. We just put that in for safety reasons and that kind of gives them, the participating landowner. I mean, that just kind of gives them.
Oh, that.
Is that the one, Amanda, you were talking about from Ms. Ingelstad?
Subsection A. I just, so the original version had the same variance language as subsection B. And I had made the comment that that variance language wouldn't apply because we're not dealing with non-participating landowners. So I said, if you're going to put variance language in there, it should say something like,
We did.
All parties that have any legal ownership in the structure capable of habitation. And then you could essentially use that same variance language. It just needs to be specific to the participating landowners.
Okay. If you wish to amend it, we'll add that in.
Are there more questions?
I have one more. So, and I know you gave us the answer earlier, but I already forgot it. What was the reasons you left wetlands out of the setbacks?
The national wetland inventory, I guess, got a little bit more creative than we thought. Like every little, almost creek bed that ever held water was considered a wetland. And the original version that we had looked at online didn't look like that. And so when they pulled it up through the county, it was much different and very, like it was like the whole state. And so we were like, oh, that wasn't what we intended to protect. So we're just referring to PSC's guidelines on that. They have some language in theirs as well that should protect it. And so we just decided not to dig into that can of worms.
They have extensive language about exclusion areas.
Okay, thank you. Don't they sign, have to sign off on their, they're part of every project though, so?
Yeah, they do. The game and fish does.
It's a good question. I never even thought of that, but.
Is there any more comments from the crowd? I believe we finished all this, right?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. We're going to do like two-minute comments. Okay.
Dale Burwick, it is my understanding the PSC has jurisdiction over everything that's privately owned or public traded, but a co-op, they do not have jurisdiction over. So back to transmission lines and whatnot. I believe a co-op rough rider here can build whatever they want.
Good question.
Whatever they want, wherever they want, as long as they get these ones. So just point of clarification.
That's a good point, Dale, and I'm going to put you in charge of finding out the answer on that.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else?
Hi, Autumn Richard. In regard to what Commissioner Dressler was talking about and Ms. Ingelstad, I think what she was trying to refer to is we had some information that was found that online about, it's called the Cathness Database and it's several years old at this point. And it only represented about 9% of the actual accidents that had been documented, but it had documented 221 separate incidences of blade failure with pieces of blades documented to have been flown over four fifths of a mile and that these blade pieces had gone through roofs and walls of nearby buildings. So when we talk about participating landowners wanting to waive their rights, the reason this is in place is asking for these types of buffers and barriers for everybody is because of this kind of concern. They may not be aware of it. And I just wanted to say that also in regard to Commissioner Masters' concerns, these turbine regulations were created not out of politics or anything, but strictly because of safety. Anything that was put into this, any changes that were made were either adopted by other counties across the country and all changes were backed with research and findings particularly geared towards the safety and health of the public. Anything else?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
To your point, Neil, when it comes to private industry wanting green energy, there is other alternatives like solar panels and whatnot. We do that with our own county with our new building, I believe. Is that not correct with our?
Mr. Richard, speak into the mic.
There you go.
Thank you. You can move it up so you don't have to bend over. There you go.
All I'm saying is there is other opportunities and as long as we take and remember that, maybe we just, we have to remember that if somebody's coming into their, into this county, which we govern here, that's, they have options. We're not trying to take and slam down wind energy.
And I get it and solar's even less economically feasible than wind, right? I mean, you can't put a solar farm out there and on a whatever footprint that you have and even try to compare it to wind unless you're even more subsidized than the wind is. So, yeah, valid point. I get it.
Anybody else?
Don't be picking on solar energy. I have a son in that business, so.
Okay, with that being said and the amendments that were made today, I am looking for a motion with the amendments to pass. This wind energy setback and wind turbine setbacks for planning and zoning, or that was passed by planning and zoning?
Chairman?
Yes.
I will make the motion to approve the policy on setbacks and so forth as discussed.
Okay. I have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll make that second.
Any more discussion? Mr. Zander?
Thank you.
Commissioner Zander?
Mister's just fine.
Okay.
Do we currently have any applications in the? Um, do we currently have any applications, uh, in the, or Steve? There's, there's nothing on the table right now? And. So if by saying that, there's nothing on the table right now, are we ready? Do we have, is everybody comfortable? I think from everything I've heard, I'm good with it, but I'm not sure that the public is, um, got all the answers. Um, is this a, is this a final product?
Yes, this is a final product.
Okay.
And we've met and had public hearings and had all their input.
Okay.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
The only question I have is somehow I, I'm getting back to my little deal on the, on the private landowner who wants to do something. Is there a way we can distinguish? And I don't know the answer. Amanda would have to probably do it. Is there a way we can distinguish, uh, and have, I, I understand this regulated by the PSC, but can you have a separate set of regulations for the private individual that uses the power for his, or his or her own primarily, because I know it's a utility. So if you, uh, generate more than what you use, it has to put back, dumped back into the grid. But that's my only concern. I'm worried about that, that individual. Um, and I'm just, I guess I'm a little, whatever. That's, that's, I just think it's a little too restrictive for that individual. So.
I'm sure we can bring that, I mean, I need to call for the question. There was a motion and a second, and I'm sure we can bring amendments up with some of that if somebody comes up.
Oh, it's appropriate discussion.
Yep.
Can, I have one other point to make following what Neil has said. So if an application from Mr. Burwick to put up a, a wind tower for personal use and/or his business on his property comes up, can we approve his application based on just it's, we, we are tied to our rules?
You can do it, but he has to go out and get the variances from the people within that two mile or three mile. He'd have to have an agreement with that, right?
Well.
I mean, that, that's what I read this into.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't care who responds, but.
If it's.
Come up front, please, whoever responds to that, because that's a, a big deal to me too.
Okay, um, to your point, Neil, if I want to put up a wind tower, are, are, you're talking something over 50 feet, correct? I want to put up a 500 foot wind tower, right? Anything in between. Wouldn't it be pertinent after what we've heard, what this committee has come up with, if we still don't have those setbacks for safety, for hearing, for peace of mind with your neighbor? Wouldn't, whether it's private land or not, which it's all private land, it's never going on federal land. Don't those same setbacks?
I mean, it, it.
Apply?
On the surface, it makes sense. I, I, I just, I, I'm just wondering if we're not thinking about unintended, unintended consequences here. So, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm with this, but I just want us to be able to, to, because we don't know, we, we talk about technology. Technology has changed tremendously in the last seven to 10 years. It's going to, again, hopefully there'll be alternatives to this stuff, which I think there will be.
So why should we have to cover every single base that's?
I didn't ask.
Anticipated?
Yeah, okay. It's, it's a fair point. I'm just saying, the, the, the private individual who wants to come and use it for, primarily for his usage, are we putting too many hurdles in place for him or her to come in and get?
No, I don't think so.
What, what do you think a good height, would you say maybe 75 feet or?
No, I don't know. I mean, I, I've looked, I mean, if, if the guy.
I would just propose maybe you look at that first and say, and then obviously if it becomes a problem on future applicants, you know, amendments can be made as well at the zoning level. Um, I, I would just say don't get too stuck on details because we went, we went round and round on the same thing is, is, is everything perfect? Maybe not, but, um, I, I mean, certainly it can be amended in the future. And I guess that would probably be something I would say propose or, or, or look at down the road. But thank you.
Is there any more discussion?
So, like I said before, we, the setbacks are for safety and the health of the public, right? So I have neighbors that are literally 300 feet through the trees. So if they decide to put up 150 foot wind turbines, so something fairly small in standards of what we have, you know, on the industrial side, not only is it going to affect them and their safety because it's absolutely going to, because it's going to be right in their, you know, front porch, it would affect us negatively as well.
I agree. I'm not worried about the setbacks. What I'm worried about is the other requirements, the, the, the extra expenses that someone who wants to do that is. I'm, I'm in agreement with the two mile and whatever the other setbacks are. I'm, I'm fine with that. Uh, I'm just wondering if, if we don't put the hurdle too high for the person who just wants to use it for his own, uh, private use and, um, you know, and for his farm or house or whatever.
And so the ordinance also does state in there that, you know, as long as there are people are willing to negotiate, that's also equally an important aspect of this is that, you know, if you have neighbors that are in agreement, then it definitely opens up the board for something, you know, down the line.
I agree. There should be buy-in. I, I agree.
Okay, thank you.
Any more comment? Okay, I had a motion and a second. Roll call vote. Commissioner Zander.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Commissioner Messer.
Aye.
Commissioner Franchuk.
No.
Chair votes aye. Motion carried. Okay, we need to move on to the, um, we need to park board me, um, first, you know, I'm gonna just, I'm sorry, park board. I know, I'm sorry, but, um, I am going to move for Missy Bronco. She has been here all day. And I think that then we'll move on to that. I'm sorry. Missy, um, I don't think you'll take long. So it's on Aspire ND.
Give a moment. Do you want to hand this out or do you want to wait? Okay. So thank you for the time today. Um, I'm Missy Bronco, the Executive Director of Aspire ND, and I have Emily Grand with us, who is our coordinator for the Healthy Families Program here in Stark County. Um, so I'm really grateful to be here, especially in April, as April is National Child Abuse Prevention Month. And I just, we wanted to take a few minutes to talk to you about the Healthy Families Program that is here. Um, it's been in the Dickinson Stark County area for three years now. Um, and so we really wanted to make sure that you guys were aware of some of the benefits and the program. Um, and so what Emily's handing out to you, the first, um, page is really about Healthy Families America. So Healthy Families is a visiting program where we work with families, um, often starting when they're pregnant until their child's three or four. Um, and so the document here is from Healthy Families America because we're accredited through them. We follow their standards of care and, um, and make sure that we do all of those things that are important when working with, with young families. But this document's really, I think, helpful for, um, you guys because it really shows the impact on community. And on the bottom of that first page, it really talks about the economic impact on the community, um, by investing in these families when they're young, especially when we look at the prevention of child abuse and neglect. You can see in the middle, it has 49% fewer substantiated CPS reports. We're very closely with our human service zone to work with those families. Um, one of the important pieces to note is our work is to prevent children from being placed into foster care. Um, and sometimes, you know, many of our families aren't necessarily even on that direct path, but when we think of things like having a baby and how that can transform a family, if they have postpartum depression, financial challenges, often those are the spaces where child abuse and neglect may happen. No parent gets pregnant and thinks, oh, I'm going to make sure to abuse my child and get in that road. So our goal is to prevent those challenges that families are faced with. And when they are faced with those challenges, we can help to provide resources and support and information. Um, the second page is a front and back, and it's just, uh, stories from families, um, that we've worked with. So we wanted to give you just some roundabout stories of, um, families and their success. So there's some stories about families and parenting after foster care. We work also with, um, moms who are incarcerated, either at our Stark County facility or at the women's prison, um, and really help them into that release to help have successful release. Um, you can see some unexpected pregnancy story, job search, child development, um, kind of goes on. But I think that just helps to give a good picture of some of the work that we do. And then the last page is also just talks about more of that investment, um, and that return on investment of every dollar that we invest into these types of programs, like the Healthy Families programs, that it helps to, um, reduce the funding that's needed later, especially in our human service centers, which, um, you know, is, is a focus of, of the county. Um, we also handed out a brochure, so you can have that, just some side notes on the brochure of other things we do. We have a car seat safety program, so our staff are, um, certified child passenger safety technicians. And, um, we give out car seats to families in need, so they don't have to be enrolled in our program. We also have what's called Cribs for Kids, where we can give out, um, pack and plays for families who don't have a safe sleep environment. Um, and so those are some, we really want to be strong community partners. And in the middle, you can also see just some of the other services for families who are enrolled. Um, a couple pieces to note, it is not income eligible. There's no income eligibility to be part of our program. It's really any parent who's pregnant or just had a baby that is interested in extra support. There's no cost to the family. Um, for the services, our funding is blended. So we call that blended. We do receive some state dollars. Um, but the rest of our funding, the state has expectations that in each of our communities, we reach, we get also community dollars to invest into the community, the specific program. So we have, um, we write a lot of grants, community foundations, organizations, um, Giving Hearts Day, all of those types of things to really piece it together so that we can offer some of these services that are so vital to our community, to any family who's interested. Um, Emily, anything that I'm missing? I'm trying to, I know we're a long day, so I want to be quick for you guys. Uh, side note, you see a little blue ribbon? That's the child abuse prevention. So we want to make sure we highlighted that. Um, today, we are not specifically here to ask for any certain specific amount of funding, but we would like to be considered, um, in future budgeting to see if we can ask for some dollars to support the program, um, in, in the families in our area. Questions?
Ms. Bronk, Ms., what are you looking at for future budgeting? What are you hoping to get? What is your target?
Our target, if I could pick a dollar amount right now, would be $10,000, which would help to support most, our, our biggest cost is staffing.
Okay.
Because it's staff that do the services. They meet with families weekly. They go into their homes. They go to appointments with them. So it's that time that is the most vital piece. And we are finding more and more with some of the grants. They aren't wanting to fi, fund staffing. They want to fund, um, product and items and things like that. So, um, if I could pick a noun today, I would say $10,000 to just help support us to continue to add new staff and have those staffing hours as we grow.
Okay.
So where's your primary funding come from? Is it all grants?
It's primarily grants, correct. We do receive some Medicaid dollars. It covers about a fifth of the cost of a visit. So it's a very low rate, um, for families that have Medicaid. Um, so it doesn't even come close to covering the cost of those visits.
So who oversees your program? I mean.
So I'm the Executive Director. We are in about 18 counties in North Dakota, and Emily is our coordinator here in Stark County. So she oversees, just for information, we have, um, we service Stark County and the surrounding, all of the surrounding counties here. But Stark County is our, probably probably about 90% of our families are enrolled are from Stark County.
So who's, whose umbrella are you under?
Um, Aspire, and good question. Thanks, Mr. Zander. Um, Aspire ND is our nonprofit. We, the Healthy Families Program has been around for 22 years in North Dakota, three years here. Previously to being with Aspire ND, we were under Lutheran Social Services. So when Lutheran Social Services closed, I started the new nonprofit to re-home the Healthy Families Program because we wanted to make sure that that program didn't go away.
What is your budget sitting at right now?
For, um, so, that's a great question. And I should have broken it down for this area. I'm going to say, because I, I deal with the whole budget across our, all of our 18 counties, um, but we are probably at about $170,000 for this area for staffing and rent. We have a small office, um, that, but we really try to keep our costs very low to just be able to provide that service and mileage. So that's another big cost because we are going into homes.
And you're sitting fine, you're sitting okay right now until budget time?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So, um, in our new budget, are, we follow the state budget fiscal year, so July to June.
Okay.
So just wanted to come and say hello. It's Child Abuse Prevention Month and to be able to come back hopefully and ask for those funds.
Sure. Um, make sure get with Ms. Richards and get her, your contact information so we can involve you in the budget.
Awesome. That would be great.
And I'm sorry you have to wait so long.
Oh, go ahead. Real quick. Um, and also we are doing a lot of smaller like fundraisers throughout the community as well. So Badlands Big Sticks let us do the 50/50 raffle, um, Last Chance softball tournament. They let us, Parks and Rec let us do, um, selling up the home runs and stuff. But, um, our first independent fundraiser coming up is on the 30th of this month. And it is a 3K instead of a 5K, um, because we're wrapping up a Child Abuse Prevention Month, um, with a 3K. And if you have little ones that are little legs, just don't quite make that 5K. So we cut it to three to accommodate really that target audience. So I do have some flyers for the 5K. Um, we have secured some sponsorships from Fisher Industries, Marathon, Sandra West Company, and, um, a smaller contractor that we're still waiting on. But so, um, we are doing, we're active in the community raising funds, um, in any which way we can. So we try to pull from all avenues for our budget.
And when is the 3K?
The 30th. It's a Saturday. And you can find us on Facebook, just Healthy Families Dickinson or Aspire ND. Um, and those are our websites as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. Ms. Heiser, would you like to put the Fairgrounds Building Fund and the Park Board meeting together? Or is it two separate?
It is two separate.
Okay.
Park Board first.
Okay, um, Park Board meeting. We will adjourn the, or we will take, not adjourn.
Can we switch?
We'll take a recess from the county commission meeting and call the Park Board meeting to order. Thank you, Amanda. You what? Oh.
And Randy Schwartz also cannot make it now because we're a little on the later side. So he won't be on the phone. But I do have.
Help me.
Will Ovass. She is our honorary member. So whenever you're ready, you can call the meeting to order.
We'll, uh, call this meeting to order. So we're going to kind of run through this and bear with me. Uh, we're going to go down through, ratify the agenda.
Yep. And I do have one thing.
Does anybody have any?
Sorry.
Go ahead.
I do have one thing to add to the agenda. Um, I'd like to add, um, I talked to Randy Schwartz, and we'd like to add the Park Board meeting start time to, for discussion at the end of new business, please. Okay. And that's all I had to add.
Okay. So that'll go down as ratifying the agenda?
I'll move, we ratify the agenda with the, with the added chain.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll oppose. Okay, we'll, uh, go to approve the minutes of the last meeting. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
Uh, all in favor? Signal aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Minutes are approved. Now, County Parks Board Director Lisa.
All right, Lisa Heiser, County Parks Director. Good morning. Still, I look, um, looking at just the future of what we're doing here in 2022. We're booked up pretty solid with, um, most of our events already confirmed.
we're booked up pretty solid with most of our events already confirmed. There's a couple of them that we're still tentative on. But you have a list of those events as well as them being on the StarkCountyFair.net site, that is the Fair Association's website. So you can check all of those out. One thing that we've done this week is we've added the new stalls, and those are set up now, are being set up as we speak, out at the fairgrounds. So we took the lining of the stall panels from the stockpens, the lining of those where they load and unload, we took those out because they were getting wavy and bent and not looking very good. So we took those out, repurposed those, and put in some harder lined, I guess the, we used pipe for those so that they hold up over the years. And then we repurposed those ones. So now we have, we're adding 28 stalls for a total of 72, which is pretty good for an outdoor facility to have that many stalls available for us. We did meet with the, Gary Greff, with the Enchanted Highway. He had approached the commission and requested a little bit of information. So we met with him and just talked about some of the items and some of the issues we'd have with the Enchanted Highway becoming part of the Stark County Park Board. And one of the issues that has us kind of a little bit maybe not willing to venture any further with that is the maintenance costs. But again, the, there's seven, almost going to be eight sites, and only three in Stark County. The Hedinger County Commissioner was here as well, Angela Carlson. And so she met with us too, and she just said their county doesn't really have a whole lot of funds to support their soon-to-be, you know, five sites. And so we're just looking a little further. I'm just helping Gary kind of step through that a little bit with maybe a meeting with North Dakota Tourism. One thing that she would like us to do is to put together a letter of support that the counties, I guess, receive a little bit of a, funds through dollars of tourism for the sites, I guess, to maintain them and to do that. So for us to just support what the Enchanted Highway brings to Stark County. And so I'd look for a motion to put that letter together and to have either Jason or Randy sign it and send that to the North Dakota Tourism.
I'll make that motion for the letter of support to be signed by Randy.
Okay.
Or?
Do we have a second?
I'll second, who's going to write the letter?
I'll write the letter, yep. I've got some letter of support ones that we do.
So now do we talk about it?
Yes.
What is, when you write a letter, so you're basically asking the North Dakota Tourism for money to support this project?
I won't be asking them for money. Basically, I'll just put the letter together that will say that the board supports North Dakota Tourism taking this on and the reasons why it wouldn't fit for the county to take on because of that division in the counties. So we're not specifically asking, but we're asking them to support it by showing that we support what he's doing and the fact that it brings business to our county.
Okay.
Yep.
I don't know if there was a second, was there a second? Neil, do you make the?
Neil's second.
So any other on your report?
Say all in favor.
All in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
Chair says aye. All oppose?
Good, okay, I'll get that, and then I'll get it out to you guys to see. And then just grants, I'm working on a grant right now with the North Dakota Outdoor Heritage Fund. That one's due May 3rd in relation to something we'll talk about here later at the Lakeview Park. So just, that one will be coming forward, so hopefully we get something out of that one. So that's all I have for your report for today.
Okay, so do we approve that report?
Yep.
Or everything's good, we just move on?
Unless you have questions.
Any questions? Okay, we'll move on to the master plan revision, the new layout.
Okay, and you can go ahead and play those. If you look on the screens, you'll see some of the first view of the architect's renditions of the building that we are working on for the indoor arena and events layouts there. So these are just the outside visions of those, just so that everybody can kind of get their first look at what that looks like. As you recall, in the last meeting, we budgeted for some pedestals to be moved. I'm not talking specifically about the building right now, but the pedestals to be moved, we received $72,000 in COVID funds in order to move those pedestals. And those pedestals, if we add, because we're looking at moving, there's 10 of them to move, four will just move to the south, and then the other six will move to the north side of the property where the trailers actually park. And we're looking, we have room to add some more, so there would be a total of 36 of them total. What you're seeing in your proposal, and that would be the electric sales and service proposal, that's the $132,150 minus that $72,000 would come off of that. This is what I'm proposing that we do, and I'm requesting that the board consider, that we do this as one whole project. This does meet the, below the $200,000 threshold of bidding, as I've checked with our state's attorney. But what I'm proposing we do with the restrooms coming onboard and going to bid, there's not enough electrical in the current facility in the outdoor that we're doing. And so if we run that electrical from a new transformer, and that would feed also the new pedestals that we have over there, it actually saves us between $30,000 and $40,000 doing it now versus if we wait to have to add the electricity when we add this building. And so that's what I'm asking for, is to go ahead and use the $72,000 in the COVID funds and then the additional 60, what is it, 60? I didn't do that math very well, 60-some thousand dollars in addition to do that all in one. What it'll do is it'll cost us money on this side, but when we bid the restrooms, it will actually save us money on that because the electric will already be there. It will be within 200 feet of those restrooms. So either way, we pay for it, it's just that whether we want to save $30,000 or a little bit more now.
We already decided to put restrooms in?
Yes. Yep, those are, we're just waiting on those. The architect, HTG Architects is working on the rendition for those, and the layout part of it, just revising because we went a little bit smaller than we needed. We didn't need it to be so big. Yes, it's in the special funds.
With that, I'll make a motion that we approve, that we go forward with this. Of the $132,150 for the electrical work.
Do we have a second?
I can second that, I've got a question though.
Sure.
Of the $132,150 we had pulled out of ARPA 72?
Yes.
So we have 60 left?
Yes.
And you have that in your budget under special projects?
Yes, yep, it's in the funds, yep, special project.
And so I'm assuming that the electrician who made this recommendation to you has kind of thought out the whole process of everything that might go on out there?
Yes.
Because I, you know, I know once you get up to those higher amperages, you know, a lot of people use three-phase, you know, if you get high horsepower or whatever, I'm just.
We do have current three-phase out there, but this here is going to be one-phase because it'll be cheaper for us. It'll run everything we need. It'll be a 200 ampage box, which, I'm not an electrician, but I guess that's pretty good. And it will allow for us in the future, say 20 years, that we need to add some more. We could potentially add more, it'll run the restrooms and everything. We did meet with Rough Rider Electric out there as well to talk about how we would feed the new building because it's a little ways away too, in a different spot. And so some of that was discussed, and we will have plenty of power for all of that. We wanted to make sure, definitely.
Thank you.
It's a good point.
And so, do we discuss this after we vote?
No.
Okay, this is, okay. So we're moving RV pedestals that we already have existing right now?
Yes.
Okay, from where to where?
So where they're currently at right now is on the south side of the stockpens. They're too close and they're, you can't use all 10 of them for plugins. I get about 14 of them that I can use if people park accordingly, and plus people run over them because they're in the middle of the parking lot. So what we're doing is, and what you guys have approved last December, was to move four of those to the south by those trailers. And so those ones will stay there for when the rodeo committees come or the concerts and that sort of thing, they'll still have them. Then the other six and added up to this, there will be 14 more that we add on the north side where all the trailers park. So by virtue of moving that arena, when we approved the master plan revision to, at the last meeting, at the February meeting, the north arena will move closer to the outdoor arena so that they can be utilized together. And then those electric pedestals will run all around that north fence on this side of the current.
And then, then just a quick question?
Sure.
This still will be able to run big TVs in the arena? It'll be able to run concert venues?
Totally separate.
Oh, okay.
Yes. That arena is set up on three-phase, so that's already set there, but it's at its capacity.
Okay.
So that's why with the restrooms, we didn't know it was that capacity until we started the discussions on moving the pedestals. So it's that capacity for what that arena can run.
So we have a motion, now we need a second? We've got a second? Okay, so now we do a roll call vote? Okay, Commissioner Arthon?
Aye.
Commissioner Franchak?
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
Commissioner Zander's not here. Commissioner Messer?
Aye.
And Jason Voss votes aye.
Thank you.
So is that the end of old business?
Yep.
Okay. So we'll move on to the new business, the fundraiser brochure.
So just a quick update on that, they anticipate having that to me this week, if not early next week, so I will get that to you. We will print it, they're adding these photos here so that when we're out talking to people, they can kind of see what we're looking at. We're just not looking at just a plain tin building, so they have it. I've been meeting with a lot of the bank personnels and a lot of businesses, just kind of getting them onboard, getting a little bit of a relationship with what we're trying to do. And we have a lot of support, so I think this is going to go very quickly with this. So that'll be something that we hit fairly quickly and fairly soon. I don't need anything from that, but I wanted you to be aware of that.
Okay. Do we need to approve this, or is that's just something we need to know?
Yep.
Okay. So now we're going to move on to the Lakeview, or Lakeview Park, the community engagement meeting we had on Friday, is that correct?
Yes. Do you want to talk about that? You want me to?
Yeah, I can kind of give an update there. From my understanding, Lakeview was a subdivision that they built. They had to have a certain amount of park, greenery, or what they called it. So that was however many years ago, and it's gotten really run down, to say the least. Do have, do have a tennis court with a pretty good.
Foundation.
You know, foundation, and they have a basketball court, which is terrible, so it needs to come out. Lisa talked about, and Bernie was there, talked about a special court going down. What was the court called?
It was called a versa court.
A versa court. And so there was, there was several, you know, it was $100,000 or so to put everything in. And then we just talked about what their needs were. And basically, the people really wanted something to ride their bikes on and play basketball. They said the tennis court, really nobody uses. And if they want to play tennis, obviously we got a heck of a tennis court there at the rec center. So we were talking, I brought up, you know, I've played on many courts, and the tennis court out there would be great, you could put four hoops around it and you have two full courts. Right now, you could do it, you know. This other way, you'd have to vote on things, and it would take a long time to get things installed for the kids to play. There's grandparents out there, there's several kids out there, so the grandparents invite their kids over all the time, so they want to play. So I don't know where we go from here, but that's what we basically talked about.
You want to add something?
I think that using that tennis court for a basketball court, I think it needs some leveling and stuff. It's a little low on one spot, but you know, at that respect, we can take the old basketball court and take that out and use it for a park or some seating for, or maybe some parking or some seating for tables, because we need, we need to have a park out there, we need to have some seating there, and we need to improve the parking out there. So I think that's a good idea as to, and we could probably, without spending a lot of money, get this basketball, tennis court slash now to-be basketball court in service with it for him this year, instead of having to wait through budgeting and grant and everything else to try and put it all together. So I mean, it would be a good start to give these people some, an optimistic start on that we're there. And then we are taking over the maintenance of the park also, so.
Oh, I guess we talk about that. Lisa, in 2019, noticed that we were paying the taxes on it, right?
That there was no taxes, right?
The county board, there was no taxes. So then they basically had to forfeit the land, and now we take care of it.
Yep. And to add to the meeting as well, you know, we just devised a plan of what we would do. So what I'm going to do is obviously apply for that outdoor parks fund through the outdoor grant. That we won't know until September 1st. But I do have $20,000 currently in the budget for that park. Didn't know what needs we would need at that point, but anticipated about that. I think some of the things that were proposed at that meeting, by virtue of the basketball court, is going to save quite a bit of funds there. They've also requested a play park of some sort, and so we presented them with some options on that play park. So we're going to just put together kind of a plan so that all the neighborhood can see it, and also all of Stark County, because they are welcome there as well. This isn't a private park by any means, so everybody can come to it. So that's what we'll do, and as soon as we have that, we can start moving forward with some of those plans for that park.
So what you need, you're going to just bring plans forward and bring us pictures?
Yep, yep.
So now we move on, then? Okay, restroom bid documents?
So those are being worked on, and those we may, and I don't know, do we have to bring that back to this board in order to do that? Our architect and the engineers are looking at that, we've already approved the funds for it.
Is this the bid here?
No.
Oh, okay.
I would think we still got to approve, formally approve any bid. You have funding and spending are kind of two different items, right?
Okay, so then I'll just, I'll just request a special meeting if they come, you know, between now and, so that we can get that bid. It'll take three weeks before they actually advertise it.
Okay.
So I'll be bringing those forward to you.
But that was approved already, the money for that was approved already?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, yep.
So we need, so we do need to approve Ms. Ingleston's money again, since we approved it once already?
We would have those documents first, right? Yeah.
Okay.
So we'll do that. I'll just make a note to, that we'll consider a special meeting if we need to do that.
Okay, and then we'll, the Park Board meeting. But, yeah, Park Board meeting, should we move the time?
To when?
So we were proposing to maybe move it from 8:00 to 9:00, so it's before your commission meeting. If it was going to be a shorter one, obviously, 8:30 to 9:00, whoops, sorry, before the commission meeting would start, just to make sure that everybody can be here on the right times, if that works for everybody. The only thing is, I know in century code, we can move it outside of the commission meeting. We just have to say this is what our schedule is going to be. And any variances of that has to be posted, which could be posted on our new site.
I think that would be fair. Personally, I think that would be fair to, I mean, you have to wait a long time. I mean, you know, it's really hard to say we're going to start Park Board at 10:00 or 10:30 sometimes with agenda like today.
Everything going on, sure.
I think 8:30 would be okay.
Just as long as, most of the Park Board, just as long as they don't have to come on a separate day. You know, they're already here. Yeah, I would try to say the same day.
Yep.
It's half an hour earlier for me, but.
You have a problem with that, you're going to have people?
We could go after too, but you would never know what time.
And you're going to have people coming in, getting ready for the commission meeting? You know, it might be a little bit distracting to the, what's going on, but I mean, I don't have a problem meeting at 8:30.
Well, if we're on, it would already, that would already be in, up and running then.
No, no, I understand that, but I mean, people that are coming in for the.
Oh, right, right.
For the regular meeting, for the commission meeting, you know, and so that we can, but I mean, it's just something that we'll work with, and if they walk in, they know something's going on, they'll probably be quiet.
Do you guys? Do, do you guys, or is that okay with you guys? Amanda?
Somebody stand out like a golf, golf, uh, match where they hold up the quiet signs when they walk.
Applause.
And we can try it for a couple of meetings, and if, if it doesn't work for you guys, we can always change it. It can be flexible, I think, our board.
Do we vote on that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we, um, have our park board meetings at eight thirty of the, uh, first Tuesday of every month, before our Stark County Commission meeting.
Do we have a second?
A second.
If Bernie seconds it, uh, do we do a roll call, or just all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passed.
I'll make a motion, are we adjourned?
I'll second that.
Okay, meeting adjourned, thank you.
Thank you.
I thought Benny was going to get up here and get to talk.
He's going to, now.
Going to, right now.
I want to stay and listen to that.
Turn it anyway.
Okay, I'll bring the Stark County Commission meeting back to order. Yes, you're welcome. Next on our agenda, we'll have, um, the Fairgrounds Building Fund, Lisa Heiser. That also includes, um, Benny Paulson. I'll let Lisa speak first.
Lisa Heiser, County Parks Director, um, just wanted to bring a few things to your attention with regards to, um, the Fairgrounds building that we're doing, and I know I gave this, um, cost piece, I know it wasn't colored for you guys, but I gave that to you in your park board package, so I, I apologize for that. It's just an example, it's not anything I'm looking for, um, you guys to do, but it just shows the building, and it shows some of the costs that are involved in this, and they just keep going up and up and up, and they're becoming a little bit harder to get. So we're looking anywhere from, you know, eight months now is what I'm being told, up to, to a year. So that timeframe is shrinking up a, a little bit from what it has been in the last, um, two or three weeks even. So that part is, is good, um, but just wanted you to see kind of what these costs are. And then Benny would like to come up and speak a little bit about the building itself, um, and just talk about the importance of it for the community.
I've been asked to speak on behalf of a few different entities and organizations, I guess, and people and their personal opinions and wants and needs, which I'll definitely keep shorter than I need to be. Seeing these, the renditions and what Lisa, what, what's going on, that, that identifies a lot of the concerns. Uh, for example, one of the major ones is minimum of twelve hundred seats is how, what they feel is kind of the cash flow and do a professional type event, so this way exceeds that and allows for really good, to attract really good events. One of the other main ones that people, producers, contractors are concerned about is getting people out there is sometimes tough. But seeing these pictures, I think that in itself is going to make that place a venue to, to attract people to come out there. It looks fantastic. Uh, another thing is on the, on the, on them lines, turning lanes off the highway is everybody thinks would be great. I know that's a state issue, but that would, that's one of the complaints you often hear when you're doing events out there is getting in and out of there. So, uh, just turning lanes, which I'm sure you guys are well aware of. Um, some of the organizations, um, I guess I'm representing DSU Rodeo, uh, that's a bunch of contractors, I suppose, FedEx Pro Rodeo, Nathan Hoff, or H and H Productions. There's lots of pro, pro contractors, pro producers that will love, will be fighting, they will literally fistfight each other to have events in this building. Am I right? It's a great event, so that's, that's not a problem. Locally, supporting the, the, uh, local community, DSU, Coach Larson said he would, he would, um, it would allow him to move the college rodeo earlier or later, not have to worry about weather, so, you know, it would, it would increase the college, the DSU rodeo team, the college in general, be really good. Another one of the more important, I feel, entities that would benefit from this is Buzzard Bait Miniature Bucking Ponies and Bulls. They're currently doing events at the college arena, um, and this is, this is an organization that is encouraging youth, building confidence, building responsibility, growing the future generations of this sport, which is a great sport. A lot of kids don't have the opportunity to play other sports, and sometimes rodeo is the only thing to keep them out of trouble or keep them living good lives, and, uh, so they, they would love, they'll, they'll definitely do events there. Design, any, I guess you got, you know, everybody's concerned about design, everybody wants it to be designed how they, so they can do their events and how they want it, but you have one of the best facilities in the world, as far as I'm concerned, is an outdoor arena, and you have some of the best people running it. Lisa and Al are amazing to work with, they attract people that you want to work with, they also call out and distract people you don't want to work with. They, they're so good to work with and do such a great job there. Um, I think that's about it, you, you know, Jason Voss as well, there's always people you can talk to, uh, Chip Poland. Um, the college, I guess, is, they're, they constantly talk about expanding that indoor. So depending on what goes on here, that wouldn't have to be done so much, but there's, the communication is always a key. I'm always worried about communicating with other, other entities. So, and there's a lot of other buildings going up around the, the state also. I think that's about, about all I got.
Mr. Paulson, you had talked about, and you had made some comments to other people, and that's why I called you about down and how the South Dakota show runs and, you know, the necessity to have something here so we could have that here also. Because, I mean, how the Stock Show was just such a huge success down there.
Yeah, so Rapid City, it's, you know, they get people from all over the, all over the country, I would say, because they have that great facility. Uh, a lot of that comes down to, I believe, the management, the production of putting on an event too, so, but you can't do that without a facility like this. So the facility breeds, um, well, it gi, it gives producers and contractors, uh, an opportunity to bring really good things. So, and that's one of the big concerns from the producers and contractors that have reached out to me is that the facility is good enough to be able to do something that becomes, like Stock Show, what would you call it? It's, 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 it's a mini National Finals rodeo.
Yep.
And now they've just built it. It's amazing, yeah. Yep, it's great for, well, they've expanded, they have two different, they have the fairgrounds going, their new building at the Rushmore Plaza, there's, it just keeps getting better, so, yeah, but you got to have the building like this to do it, and that looks good to me.
Though, and though they, they bring in one of the biggest horse sales around too, with that Stock Show, don't they?
Um, horse sales.
Don't they have that during that?
They have, on this, at the same time, they have a horse sale and a pro rodeo going on one day. They also have a major concert and a pro rodeo going on. Most, most communities that size can only do one of those things at a time. They've grown it to such a massive level that they have to put on two humongous things at once. So it, it's really cool. And that being said, you know, there could be some partnership with DSU Arena and with this arena, if, if that grows, that's the, that's the, the level of potential for a community like Dickinson that is possibly growing anyways. So, uh, good stuff, really good stuff.
Okay.
Anything else for me?
How many facilities are like this in western North Dakota from Bismarck to Minot to Pretty Clean?
I can't think of any. Wofford City is proposing, Wofford City's building one. That's. Oh, they do, okay, so that's in progress. So that'll be one, um, on the Fort, Fort Berthold Reservation, they're going to have, every little community on the Fort Berthold will have an indoor arena, but it doesn't have seating capacity, none of them will, so, there, I mean, Bismarck doesn't have anything close to this, you have the Civic Center, but that's very seldom used and have to set up spec, specifically for events like that. So this would be one of a kind, I suppose. Be awesome.
And we wouldn't be just, I mean, it wouldn't be just summer bringing in revenue, it would be.
Well, that's the biggest thing, I mean, this, there's so many events in the summertime that they compete against each other, so none of them are that great. So this allows wintertime opportunities where people are craving rodeos in the wintertime, which is why Rapid City, the Stock Show, is so successful too. In January, people are looking for stuff to do, uh, and not in a dingy, dusty, dirty building. If we can do it in a really nice one, now it's a thing. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
So just to answer a couple of questions, um, that he had, the twelve hundred seating minimum, we're actually going twenty-five hundred, growth to forty-five hundred, so that we have some growth potential in the future, um, already in this, and obviously. The turning lanes, that is something, um, they don't call it a turning lane, Al did, they call it a bypass lane? Pass-through lane, so, um, the DOT has already agreed to do that, so that is in their plans, um, for this summer. So that'll be, that'll be coming, so if you didn't know, that, that'll be good, and that'll help with the safety and getting people in and out and people around everywhere we need to go. We have full intention of, on the Fair Association side, to work with the, the college, the high school, and the junior high to make sure that they get time in this facility, um, so that they can be prepared for their early events. Um, and I do have to talk to DSU about their dates, because they have not, you know, we've got this building booked for fourteen weekends out of the year. Um, obviously, that's going to change depending on what time we do it, so if they have dates they want, they better get them to me. So those are the things, um, when we go through the layout and the interior, you guys will all be involved, we'll have some public input meetings as well, um, to be able to get the people that are users of the facility and some of the people that are building and different things that they, they can add to the discussion to it so that we can change it and make it the best possible that we can, because I don't pretend to know it all either. So with that discussion, um, I'm asking for this board to consider, um, giving us a little bit more money. Um, by virtue of the, going through the budget process, I saw that the county extension agent had excess funds in theirs, and, you know, one of the reasons why we put up this building isn't just to put on a bunch of events for things, but it's to bring people together. And our 4H group is one of the most important groups, um, for our youth to, to grow. Right now, they're at the Bijou Activity Center, they were at DSU's indoor arena, um, now we rent a tent for about fifteen hundred dollars for a couple of days, um, to put their poultry and chickens, that's not big enough for them. So right now, they are in two different spots, which they were in three, um, they may have to go back to three different spots, and this would, this building puts them all together. And so, um, and I have to ask the auditor, because I don't know, is it one point three million that he has in there? Do you know that? One point three or one point seven?
It's probably a little bit.
One point seven.
More than that, than one point three, but I.
I just couldn't remember which was which.
I do know that in speaking with Lisa about this being part of the 4H, you know, obviously, our county extension is a big part of the 4H. I also reached out to North Dakota Association of Counties and just spoke with, um, Linda Sahovic about, you know, potentially using something that was levied for, it just has to be applicable to, um, that department. So because that money was levied for county H, which is a big part, um, for county agent, which is a big part of 4H, the commission could move funds from there to go towards a 4H, help with the 4H facility. Whereas like some of our other accounts that were levied for, let's say, veteran services, we couldn't take money from veteran services and, and pay for a 4H facility. So, um, I did have that discuss, discussion with North Dakota Association of Counties on whether or not, you know, that was even a possibility, and they did say yes if it is for 4H and it's related to that, that department.
And we are over the seventy-five percent threshold with that, with the, you know, with the state way over on that, because it was, that, that particular department was over-leved. I believe that they quit getting money in two thousand fifteen. That money is sitting in that account, pretty much not doing anything. There is money that comes in from Billings County and from NDSU, so there is money coming in so that, it's not like that account would be drained or that account would then be.
Have you visited with Kurt about this?
Not with Kurt's, well, I shouldn't say not, I have, and he just said you don't want to go there. And that's, that's all he said, and I said, oh, I do want to go there, and so, um.
If he doesn't want to go there.
That's been the same discussion I've had with Kurt as well.
Yeah.
Well, and it's just somewhere, um, as, there's somewhere we need to go, because we can't have almost three per, we can't be atable almost three hundred percent over in that department and letting that money just sit there. I mean, that is what it's for, is 4H.
And I did have the discussions with the auditor too, how much does he use per year? Because I don't want to take money that's going to short any department, uh, honestly, I just don't. Um, but if it's money that the taxpayers have already paid in and sitting in a savings account, I can't by rights not ask for it and then go ask for the taxpayers to pay for this building, um, in terms of funds that way. So that's why I'm asking for you to at least consider it.
Well, I think the seventy-five percent rule would be the least likely reason why we would do this, because I think that's asinine, but.
But it's still century code, so we have to, it's, I mean, it's still, it's still a law.
That's a whole, a whole nother discussion that we can do, but, uh, I would say we have to start the discussion between you and, and Kurt and go there. And because, obviously, this is the first I've heard of it, and so I, I don't have any background to, uh, to, you know, make a decision on.
So Kurt can decide to do that money?
No, never said that.
Oh.
I mean, it's a, I think it's a thing that the commissioners can decide on also, I mean, we have known, I've known for years now that it, that's over, it was over-leved and they took the money away and we're just letting it sit there, and it's taxpayer money. And we're just letting it sit there, and he doesn't need it, because the money he's getting from Stark County, Billings County, NDSU, the money that he is getting is covering his department.
I'll, I'll do some.
It's not completely covering his department.
Not completely, but.
No, but it would take a long time to go through those funds. I think if you, the commission chose to do maybe a reasonable amount of the excess, not deplete it in any way, but do a reasonable amount, that would be a different conversation.
And I just want to confirm, Karen, you did talk with the Association of Counties, and, and the reason I ask is because if I'm looking at, um, chapter eleven thirty-eight, there's a, a sentence in there that says, "All funds raised by levies under this chapter, which is the county extension agent, must be appropriated by the Board of County Commissioners for the purposes set forth in this chapter." And I, it's silent on 4H, um, so that's kind of what my question was as well, is what exactly is the purpose is set forth in this chapter? So, you know, if, if the Association of Counties is saying that it is, I guess I would probably defer to them, but.
I, the, just the discussion I had, I to, um, I just, you know, and I was obviously going to check with the state's attorney anyways on it, is the discussion I had with her, she thought that that would be reasonable, but that's a, advice, you know? I have to go by whatever, you know, century code says on that, but 4H does fall under our county agent, and so it's part of his. It's not unreasonable to think that they need a building and this could contribute to it. Do, Amanda, are you reading it differently, I guess, or?
I don't know that I'm reading it differently, I'm just cautious, um, about it, because it, it talks about like achievement days, it talks about the staff and the county extension salary.
The achievement days is 4H achievement days.
Yeah, so it talks about shall pay from funds appropriated for boys and girls club workers, so, some not to exceed five hundred dollars to the extension agent of each county. So it's one of those things where it, it very well may be that, uh, it's allowed under, um, the statute, but it doesn't specifically.
Could you give an opinion on it?
I, I'll do some digging into it, yeah, I mean, I don't have any, any issue with that at all, I can definitely take a look at it. When you talk to Linda, do you know if any other county has used their extension?
From what I, conversations I had, it didn't seem like a bunch of them had a bu, and the excess.
They're really, the other ones, counties didn't really have an oversight where the county agent had one point eight million dollars in their department.
Well, whatever's in the budget, I don't, I don't know that it matters, I think what matters is how the statute says it has to be directed. And, and like I said, for, the 4H building, for 4H, it very well may be, uh, under this chapter, it just doesn't specifically say it, so it's going to take me a little bit of digging to, to make sure.
And I think that was the conversation that we wanted to have, is just, can everybody kind of look into it? Is this a possibility? It seems like it is, but I'd rather know for sure, Amanda, and that's why. And that's why I, we even had this discussion on here, so.
And I'm not entirely sure why I don't want to go there. So.
Yeah.
And that's all that I could get out of Kurt was that comment. So I'm not real sure what, you know, if any, he said he didn't have any plans for it. But that was further. So if you just do table it, whatever you would like to do.
Yeah, and I'll just do some digging on it and see what I can come up with.
How much of it do you want to use?
I was saying a million dollars to move over a million would help us considerably in what we're doing. And that still leaves him years of, I don't know how many years, 70,000, depending on what that other amount is, but.
We figured about still 10 years that would leave him without having to levy. I don't either.
Guess we'll wait and see what Amanda finds out.
Can we make sure and put that on the next meeting? Okay. Is that enough time? Okay, we'll put it on the next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Lisa. Richardson fired brush truck?
So I'll make this pretty quick. I know everybody's getting worn out. Richardson came to me with their invoice for their, their truck finally came in, their fire truck that they ordered. We had originally said to use COVID, but then we had sent out a letter that said they are allowed to use those funds accordingly, like all the other fire departments. So the remaining balance for Stark County to pay, in which I will need a motion from the commission for Richardson, is 42,46220. And that covers that brush truck. And that's our portion. They did get money from Dunn County, contributed at 82,930. Insurance money was 60,000. And so 42,46220 is what is left. So I'm just looking for the commission to make them.
Where do we take that from?
I would ma, I would make the motion to pay that amount. I would say just the general fund.
Well, we made that commitment and I'll make that motion that we take the money out of our general fund to cover the 42,000, whatever it was.
42,46220.
46240 or whatever it is.
I'll second.
Okay. There's a motion and a second. Roll call vote, Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry.
No problem. Just a real quick question. If I remember right, he came in front, the truck was trashed. He had the bids, got the insurance money and we said, get the truck, da, 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 and come back to see us when we're in. We didn't do any interim funding of any kind, correct?
Right.
We did the donating of the COVID money. Remember, we did that with him both, and then we.
For the department, but not for the specific.
And we, we specifically told him at first to use it for that. And then we went, because it wasn't fair.
All right.
Yep, so this is, now they have the truck in hand, ready to go. Yep.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Commissioner Franchek.
Aye.
Commissioner Messer.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carried. Down to.
Website.
Stark County website update. Ms. Heiser.
This one's quick. Lisa Heiser, County Parks Director. I am just part of one of the members on our team redesigning our website to make it better for everybody to use, including our internal people and the taxpayers. So this is your first look at what the website will look like. We've got quick links under there. There's the very top, it's hard to see on this picture, but at the very top, there's the jobs link. There's also live meetings, so watching our live meetings on there is a quick link and then a calendar. If you go to the second slide, the second slide is the interior pages. So that'll be our department pages. And the commission would also have one of those. There's a meeting page as well that will have all of our meeting minutes for all the departments that have those planning and zoning, county parks, everything. So just kind of a quick look at what it's going to be. And then we're redesigning the interior pieces right now and those should be done. And I would guess in a month, we'll have a new website up and running.
And it'll be easy to use.
What's that?
It will be easy to use.
Oh, very easy, yes.
I'm so excited.
Good.
So that's all I had.
Thank you for the work and everybody else that's helped.
Thank you, Lisa. I know that's a lot of work, that website.
Approve.
I, I have to be in court at 1:30, so if there's something that you guys think that you're, I mean, you're going to need a legal opinion on, can we just bring it up now? If not, I'm going to take off to my hearings.
I think that you answered my question about the per diem, so I'll just skim over that one.
Okay, sounds good.
Do you want to do Shauna's so that she can read them?
Um. Radar Base Generator, Shauna Davenport.
Good afternoon, commissioners. I'm here today, we have a generator, it is the backup generator that's located at Radar Base Hill. That's where we have our essential communication equipment. There's several repeaters located in that area that is required to operate our radio equipment throughout the county. We started to have issues with the generator at the end of last year. I had to have a regulator replaced on it in January. And every Friday, I usually, the generator itself exercises and runs, but it continued to fault during those exercises. And in March, we ended up finding a crack on the expansion chamber, which is on the internal regulator. And, and also on top of that, I get a alert whenever the generator doesn't run. Those are essential basically for me in the event that there's a power outage up there and the generator fails. I have to get up there and figure out what's going on because without those repeaters, our radio communication would fail throughout the county. So at this point, the generator has reached, according to the text that I've spoken to, its lifespan. And right now, we've just got a Band-Aid on it, holding it together. And I need to just do a replacement of that generator. Generac no longer has the 20 kilowatt that we currently have up there. So I need to move to a 22 or 24 kilowatt. Denny's Electric is who holds our maintenance contract up there. We did reach out to a couple of other companies. Burger Electric was able to give us a quote as well, but they could not include the installation. And because I already have a maintenance contract that's been going on for years and they're aware of the service and requirements up at Radar Base Hill, I do feel more comfortable staying with Denny's because they're used to responding with me up there if there are issues. So right now, the quote that I received from Denny's Electric, I think you should have that in your packet, is $7,868.16. And that could go down a little if the labor ends up being less or more, but it's right around that amount. So at this point, I, I have a line item in my budget that is for Radar Base work. However, money gets taken out of there for our electrical payments for the facility and then my maintenance contracts. So I don't quite have enough in my budget to cover this. So I would need extra funds or I would just need an approval to go over budget basically on my line item. Whichever you feel.
I would ask the commission for tracking purposes, just to let her go over on her line item and then we can adjust it at the end of the year, if the commission's okay with that.
My line item is $5,000. And I think last year, I ended up close to spending maybe three to four in there. So I may go. And that was just with general maintenance and electrical fees. So that might help you figure out where I'll be over.
What's the timing on this, pretty quick?
So, yeah, I mean, at this point, I feel like it's a responsibility. I, they can't guarantee me that the Band-Aid is going to work. And as I said, if power goes down and there's no backup, we're in a safety concern for the county.
I guess I meant the availability.
Oh, well, and they have the, this is in stock right now. That's the other issue. Generators, if they're not in stock, could take up to 20 weeks plus for delivery. It's one of those supply chain issues, so I don't really want to mess around with it.
So I'll make a motion to approve the $7,868.16 for the purchase and installation of the 24 KW generator from Denny's Electric.
To go over her line budget item?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second.
It is 12 years old. They, they told me about 10 to 15 years would be normal for that out there. It exercises every week plus the elements that it's sitting in up on that, it's just normal. Sometimes they can go longer.
Runs off propane up there then, or what?
Yeah, and they go and service it regularly and keep it going for me.
What are you going to do with the old one?
Well, it's not usable, so essentially we'd just be destroying it, taking, yeah, disposing of it. Yeah, if, if so. That's something I could talk to them about, but.
No biggie.
Yeah, it's, I think that we will have to consider protecting it better from elements. What, what's up there right now is just like a top cover. And I think moisture, when it snows out there, gets into it and causes rusting.
It's enclosed in a, in a little cabin of its own at this point.
Yeah, well, that's not actually, if, and I have a different picture that, the picture where it's up on the, you can see here, this is the actual.
Oh.
So you can see obviously where snow and moisture could get into that area. And when you open up the cavity of the generator, there is rust inside. So I just don't think there was great planning when it was originally installed. So that's another, we've discussed, looking better into that as well.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. I'll do roll call, Commissioner Messer.
Aye.
Commissioner Franchek.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carried.
Okay, and then I just, real quickly, last night, the fire chiefs and myself met for our monthly fire chief meeting. And we have voted to move into a burn restriction for the county. And that would just involve being in a burn restriction when we are in the high, very high or extreme or red flag category. So Commissioner Arthur did sign that for me, so that will go out effective of today, so.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you.
Okay, now we have the approval of the local permit for the Dickinson Rodeo Club raffle.
So we, I'll make this really quick. Dickinson Rodeo Club came in, they do their yearly raffle. And I, they wanted to have their raffle cards printed, so I went ahead and signed their permit so they could get their raffle cards going. I just wanted, it's kind of a formal approval from the commission that you're okay with the fact that they're doing their Dickinson Rodeo Club raffle.
So moved.
Need a second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, chair votes aye, most passes. Approval of polling play days and hours, Karen Richard.
Let's go back to renewal of.
Yeah, we got Regent or Regent Development Corporation?
Yeah.
Leffler KC.
Sorry, missed that. Renewal of Leffler KC Regent Development Location Gaming Permit.
Okay, so this is one of our Stark County gaming areas that is in Stark County for Leffler KC. And it's operated by the Regent Development Corporation. They pay all of their fees and everything into the state and the state is really the one that monitors them. But they still have to have my signature and the county's approval. So I'm just looking for an approval of their Regent Development Corporation gaming permit for this coming year.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carried. Approval of polling plays stays in hours, Karen Richard.
Oh, I added it on there. Okay, I provided to you guys all the, the list. It's kind of at the end of the 2020 election voting centers and hours. I have the, where they're all considered voting centers. And I have Prairie Hills Mall, Stark County Courthouse. And then, of course, you know, for absentee voting, Stark County Courthouse, early voting Prairie Hills Mall. And then election day voting, we have Prairie Hills Mall, Bijou Activity Center, Bellfield City Hall and Bridgerton City Hall. I put the dates on there and I also put the times that we are planning on being open. I just want the commission's approval of the dates and the times I set forth because there, it does follow the sentry code, but, you know, sometimes they do eight to five. I chose to do nine to six and I chose to continue to do early voting. So I'm just looking for the commission's approval on these dates and times set.
Okay, looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2022 election voting centers and hours.
I'll second, just a real quick question, Karen. So that's pretty similar or identical to the last election.
I think they did eight to five last year, but I did nine to six, so people could go after they get off at five. I mean, it just depends who you ask, if they want to go before, after work, so.
But the dates are pretty similar.
The dates are, well, obviously, the voting days, date is set, but yes, the early election voting dates are the same. And then the absentee voting center dates I have on there are set by sentry code.
Okay.
Okay, since this is voting, I'll, I'll do roll call, Commissioner Messer.
Aye.
Commissioner Franchek.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carried.
And then I, I had that one more that we added to the agenda.
P and Z. Oh, Dunn County Fair Association.
Hey, yesterday, Dunn County submitted to me an approval of their gaming permit. And that was through the I Don't Know Bar. They do 21 and, and pull tab machines and, and such. And they did get, go through the city. I think they just have always went through the county too. So I told them that I would just put it through this meeting for approval, just to cover bases. But they did go through the city.
City of South Hur.
Yes.
Yeah. So you need approval from us as well?
Yeah, I think they just have done that in the past and I think we're just making sure that, because we don't really have any other ones that are in smaller cities, you know, and Leffler put theirs through, so.
I'll move to approve the Dunn County Fair Association.
Okay, there's a motion, may I get a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I just have a comment, I guess. And it's not against Dunn County Fair Association. It's just like, I think these sites that are taken out of county, they could get somebody from within the county to, to be their gaming people, you know?
I, I thought that was, and you could correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it's actually up to the bar owners who they have, right?
Yes, it is. And, and you know, but I'm just saying, stay local. But anyway, that's all I had.
That organization does donate to places in Stark County. They've given the deputies association $8,000 this past six months.
I'm just, I'm just making my comment.
I just wanted to argue with you publicly.
Because a deputy's got that $8,000.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then we have the P and Z and the Weed Board per diem change question, Karen Richard.
Well, actually, right before this meeting, Amanda shot down my hopes and dreams of changing that. And so we can't even, we can't even address it. So it's, it's as is.
Okay.
And that's everything.
The last thing I was going to put on here, I forgot to ratify the agenda, but I think it's time that, since the fact that it was a letter, it was never voted on by this board, it was never really run through, I think, run through the court system, I think it is time to lift the no contact order for Leslie Ross throughout this whole county, or the, the county courthouse. It was done in 2015. And I think that she should have the right as a taxpayer to come into this courthouse at, at any time she, she would like. And with that, I'd like a motion on that, please.
Didn't know it existed.
Yeah.
Who initiated that?
I don't even know if we'd, Tom Henning just wrote her a letter. That was it.
Thought you said you never found it on a commission meeting?
Uh-uh.
I didn't either.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Chair votes aye, motion carried. Is there anything else from the public? Oh.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Leslie Ross. Well, thank you for that. It wasn't just one letter, I just want to clarify, it was eight letters. The last being July 20th, 2020. And the last one threatened me with criminal prosecution. So I just want you to know that there was nothing founded there. Never went through the courts, there was no due process. It was all Mr. Henning. And it never came through the county board, so, but I appreciate that, thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else? We got to have one more item.
Yes.
What? Yeah, you're going to pay for.
Not for today, but I think we should look into being a home role county.
Well, now you want to agree with him when you argued with him five minutes ago.
Oh, we got a hand in the air. Mr. Burwick.
I think Commissioner Franchek.
You need to get up here and, you need to, please come to the podium, please.
State your name.
And state your name.
Dale Burwick, starving, and I think Mr. Franchek should buy us all pizza for lunch.
I'm not the one that kept us here this long.
But I, I would like to expand on what Commissioner Marsh is talking about. I, I think, again, maybe put a group together to study it. You know, there's ideas being floated around specifically towards the training center that they're going to raise a sales tax, have that money go there. I think we need to kind of think about, I know sales taxes are tough to approve, but I, I think we need to think about getting out in front of that. That would be an option for us to give back to the communities that we talked about for the Bellfields with their sewer.
Well, I mean, if, if we're going to save those communities, we have to find a way to do it. And if the quality of life goes down because of the infrastructure and all the other problems that they have, there won't be any communities there and we're still stuck with them, so.
I agree. I think you should head that committee.
I think this plan, just so you guys know, it is too late to put it on this coming election ballot, but it is something that could go on the.
It'd be too late for the general?
Well, it's too late to get it on the ballot in general because I think it's 40, 45 days before, is it April? Because I have to make the ballots here, come in April.
Yeah, that's for the primary.
So you're trying to put it on the general election?
Whatever one we can do, if it's too late to put it, I mean, I'd love to see it on the primary, but we can't do that.
We'll have to check with Amanda on that, but you'd have to do a whole charter and everything then.
Right.
Yep.
It's just like, I just think there's a lot of benefits for us to be able to, to do that.
Okay, I put Bernie in charge of this committee?
You can't make any motions, this wasn't on the agenda.
I'm not making a motion, I just said I put him in charge of the committee.
I don't think that's an action item, so I think you can just.
Yeah.
Okay, well.
I can help you out.
Do what I can do to try and figure it out.
I'll dig you up lots of stuff.
Thank you.
Okay, everything on that agenda, a motion to, a motion to dismiss or.
To adjourn.
Adjourn.
Okay.
What do you dismiss?
Dean, Dean, do you want to second that motion so we can be done?
You did?
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor?
I know.
I thought, I thought the chair can just adjourn without a motion.
I can actually adjourn without a motion.
I think it's funnier to make it a second.